Good evening. We'll bring this combined meeting of the Skowhegan Planning Board and Board of Selectmen to order. We do have a quorum. We're missing one member and one alternate. All the selectmen are here. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those who have. Motion passes. Erin, you will be voting.
Oh, okay. I didn't know.
In Randy's place. There is no, nothing under the site plan, no items by public, no communications, no unfinished business, no new business. So we will move to the purpose of this meeting, which is to get the planning board and the selectmen together to look at some of the needs that town has. We'll start off with the selectmen. The selectmen have one item here, site review, parking requirements. Who wants to speak on behalf of that from the selectmen? Nobody.
Jumping, I mean, jumping right in. We were asked to put topics of interest on this agenda. And this is one that I have spoken up about for a couple of years. And I think that I would like to see us in the next year revisit our parking ordinance in the site plan review, so that we are not duly restrictive for development that's happening in town, but also to look at all potential parking solutions in town and make sure that we are conservative of those.
I mean, it has, there have been many instances where the parking section of the ordinance has affected decisions. And there's been much talk about opening it up to allow a little more dense building without the same type of parking requirement. So I guess what we need to do is we need to see where, does anybody have any suggestions about how to do this? Or is this what we want to do as a town?
I guess one question I would have Steve is, in the planning board's history, how do you, how do you seek other models, other ideas for how towns are addressing parking? I know that I attended the Build Main Conference this year and in previous years. The keynote speaker this year was addressing parking and planning at the town level around vehicles versus other forms of transportation and what happens when you loosen parking restrictions versus have strict parking restrictions. How does the planning board typically go about just best practice, current ways of thinking as times change?
Jeff, seems like he wants to answer this question, so we'll let him do that.
Unless you want to take the first stab at it.
I can.
Go ahead and then I'll jump in.
Typically, what has happened in the past is staff or our contracted town planner would bring us what other towns have done. They would do some hunting and bring us maybe ordinances or what worked in other places where they have similar issues. Jeff?
Yeah, and the only thing I would add there is I think often we mirror it, we don't go too far out of the region. And then we try to look at, you know, maybe some bigger communities. But another piece, I think, with any of the ordinances is we have a conversation with the staff about what the enforcement of it looks like. And I think for the parking piece, that was one thing that we've always sort of tried to figure out, you know. Is it, is there a mechanism for like enforcement? You know, in the past, the town had, you know, the enforcement of the two-hour zones and some other pieces. Sort of as that went away, you know, I would say we've sort of loosely followed these guidelines. And, you know, it's sort of project by project. And I think sometimes, you know, I've struggled with sort of the consistency on that. Because we're encouraging people who are proposing a project to come back with their best-case scenario. And, you know, at times it does feel like we're kind of going through some horse trading a little bit. But, you know, right now it's clear we're not going to have a mechanism that's, you know, any sort of enforcement, sort of on the law enforcement side. So, you know, what are some best practices? I've often thought, you know, we've done some inventory around parking spaces and, you know, looked at some maps as well, which was informative. Some of those spaces are on private property. I think I wasn't on the board, it was when I was taking my hiatus from the board before I got back on, when the charter school was approved. And I feel like that parking plan was creative. You know, maybe creative in the sense that it was never going to be achieved. So then we kind of ran into a situation where we kept trying to revisit that. And so, you know, because of that, you know, that plan has never necessarily been followed in my mind. And then I think the projects that we've thought of afterwards, like the hotel, you had a project that we sort of, you know, talked through and tried to get additional spaces out of. And I think, you know, there's been some other conversations with some downtown. But I think we're definitely open. I think one thing I was thinking about tonight is if we walked away with kind of a priority of what our top priority as far as ordinances are, then we can start chipping away at them. I feel like at times when we have too much on our plate, the planning board can't like, you know, can't necessarily get out of our own way where if we, you know, take one ordinance and then we're, you know, finish that near completion. You know, we just did some updates to our solar ordinance that is going to allow for a long time for public input from now until town meeting, which I think is great. You know, if we wanted to do, you know, this and then prioritize, you know, some of these other ones. I think, you know, we have almost a year, so we should be able to knock some of these out. But if people do have specific ideas, I think it's always easier for us if it's a main example or if we can, you know, get our planning staff to kind of adapt it to be, you know.
Yeah.
I think the main parking issue for this town is really the downtown zone. The downtown area where we have buildings that are landlocked, that just don't have space around them where parking can be created immediate to the buildings. What we have talked about as a group extensively is possibly allowing a greater distance from the buildings to parking that would be added. That's something we've talked about, we've batted around different distances. We haven't come to any real conclusion about what that distance ought to be. If that was something the select board would be mediable to adding or changing in their policy. I think something as simple as that could loosen up the restrictions enough to allow people room to maneuver, to develop their abilities.
I guess, I guess I just have like a quick question about the parking. So we'll compare it a little bit to Waterville. So if you go to Waterville, they have a big parking area, kind of like we do, across the, from the Rotary. And you have to walk to all the restaurants. So what is it that is keeping the people from walking to the restaurants and the businesses in our downtown? They do it in other towns. Is it, is there other things other than the parking? Because, I mean, we can make parking so you can pour it up to the front door and get out. But if, we got to figure out why people aren't going to those businesses, I guess.
Yeah, I think. Is there other issues, I guess, is what I'm?
We currently have enough parking that suits immediate needs. The reissue comes up and we decide whether or not we're going to allow modification in the development of the upper floors, for example, of the downtown buildings. This creates the problem. Now you have people that may need to have a place to park their vehicles, they're going to live there. So now you're adding permanent vehicles, if you will, in the downtown area where they currently have, you know, they have municipal lots and so forth. And they're certainly adequate for supply parking for the current businesses that are down there. What we don't have is this issue of if we add housing.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
That's what creates the problem.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Jason has something he wants to add.
So you say we have enough parking right now. When we have festivals and stuff going on, we do not have enough parking. And it looks like we're going to be losing some spaces with Main Street doing their development too, with behind this, down on that water truck, when they put theirs in. So we're going to potentially lose, I don't know, what I'm looking at in the blueprints, six to 10 spots down there. I think you should put dwell parking on over there so people move around. You know, so you're not sitting there all day long in those parking stalls.
You were talking about the municipal parking lot, right, right downtown, behind Hyde?
I don't know how you control that.
So no enforcement?
We don't have any enforcement, we have no control.
Yes, Amber.
I'd like to see us, I mean, I feel like this is a year-long process, right? So we're expressing wishes around what we look into more deeply. But I'd like to see some consideration given to hours of use, because that's not currently a consideration in the site plan ordinance. So if one business needs parking spots at night, but another business needs them during the day, there's no consideration given to the total count there. And I think that, you know, we've done a parking study, we've done some counts of usage during, during the days. We also have issues of, and these are, these can be friendly things to work out. But on a court day, my parking lot is completely full, even though there is a court parking lot just up the street from the courthouse. So that is, that is communication that simply needs to happen with the courthouse to improve communications, to give their people a heads up about where they should park, so that they're not squeezing out all of our business spots for activity. I think that's resolvable, that's, you know, not a concern. I think there's on-street parking we could consider for festivals and events and things like that. So, so I'm just interested in exploring creative, a little more creativity and also the natural consequences of our current ordinance, which is, you know, attending a informational session on the watershed behind Madison Avenue there. We've, we're now managing pretty major problems with water runoff and water quality and environmental protection in the stream behind Madison Avenue. And some of that is a direct result of 75% of those areas being in pervious surfaces. So, so I'd like to see us do a deeper dive about just what we're currently doing, what other towns in Maine may be doing creatively, get our planners in help in devising some creative alternatives.
So, so we've got the sentiment of reducing impervious earth, which is going to decrease parking.
That's not true.
Or creating pervious parking.
There's permeable paving options.
I'm aware.
Green options, the towns should think about, that is an issue. So, sorry to interrupt.
So.
Could you tell us your name?
I'm Donnie Zeluski, I'm the superintendent for the water treatment, wastewater treatment. So one of the problems we have on our side is we have the combined sewers. And so this whole downtown is paved. So when we get a large water influx of water, it over, it overpowers the system down here. So that is also related to this parking thing. You have this surface that can't be penetrated by the groundwater, so it floods and it causes issues. I'd say all of this downtown around Hyde and all of that is, it's all paved and there's no storm drains. So if they want alternatives for, there are alternatives for permeable paving.
How, I mean, I mean, I think that's something definitely should be considered. We see it different places in Maine where they've implemented that. I don't know how well it's worked and how costly it is. We have a, we're a little different than a lot of the rest of the country in the way in which the frost penetrates, penetrates the ground and does a lot of damage of moving the ground. So, you know, I don't know, you'd have to, there'd have to be some research done. Have you, have you looked into that at all?
For the permeable paving?
Yeah.
It's something I'd like to do at our plant. It mitigates the, get that hot temperature from the sun heating up the pavement. And then also when you install it, it lets the water run through. Also, plant life can grow, so it's a green alternative to the parking problem, so.
I mean, if it works, then, you know, if it works and it's cost-efficient, you know, but you have to pay 10 times more for it and then you have to replace it five years down the road, that's a, that's something we just can't do as a town. So, so the idea is, are we looking to, we're looking to expand parking and cut down on water runoff? Is that, is that the big picture that we're focusing?
For the low parking further away from facilities.
So.
Do that without concentrating the water.
Elijah?
Can you explain what the main issue with the parking ordinance, the way that it is, prohibiting development in the downtown? So the downtown's 40% occupied because of the second floor is being vacant.
It just requires, our ordinance requires a certain number of parking spots per new use or, you know, the building of a new building depend upon how it's used. And, which means if you, if you're in a place where the footprint can't provide that parking, it means it doesn't happen. So the idea would be to remove that from our ordinance. I mean, my suggestion would be, I don't think it's a bad thing to remove that from our ordinance, but we should do all we can where a developer has the ability to provide parking to see that they do it. Some places, there's just no reasonable ability to provide parking. And like Andy has said, and it's been mentioned in our previous meetings before, you know, allowing them to provide parking a lot greater distance than nearby would be something that would, I mean, I think if a developer puts forth the money, knowing he doesn't have parking, I think just the laws of capitalism will work. If people don't like it because they don't have any parking, you know, the business won't do well. If the business, you know, if there's a segment of people that don't need parking, then it'll probably suit them really well.
Was it around, is it around one and a half spaces, which I was trying to figure out what that was?
You just have to go, you have a table.
From multifamily, it's one and a half, but there's a, there's a chart here and it's kind of outdated. You know, we've sort of struggled with it in some applications. And, you know, the other example is like, we have locations around town that have too much parking.
Sure.
You know, if you, there's.
I have a couple of those.
Yeah, there's an pervious surface at some of these locations around town. You know, we sort of went back and forth and had a site visit at the hospital because we've had concerns with the amount of parking lot that they have there. But yeah, no, it's really, I think where we're running into problems is mostly multifamily buildings. And then I would say, you know, it's that change of use, these two. Because for some of these, you know, if it's just retail, we don't even see it. You know, they come into Brian and, you know, a place could move into a space and, you know, quadruple their business just based on the business. And, you know, we never have a discussion about parking, but.
Because it's no change of use.
Because it's just a commercial use, so, yeah.
And so if there was one and a half and we have a parking study that talks a little bit about, you know, the average number of cars that a Skowhegan resident has, for example. I don't really remember the details of that parking study, I just remember it was really close. It was remarkable to me to hear about the number of households in Skowhegan that didn't have cars, which was a really high number.
I want to say 40%, and I should have reread that study before today. But it's a, it's an astronomically high number and it resonates with me as an employer that employs dozens of people who do not own cars and who walk to work.
And so, I'm sorry, but, you know, it just seems to make sense to kind of like, obviously look at what other towns are doing, what the future holds, you know, what, what research is showing. And then, you know, I'm always a fan of an empirical approach to a problem. So, you know, kind of looking at that and seeing what, what makes sense, I mean.
One thing in the past, we had situations where a lot of the businesses in the circle downtown were being impacted by the lack of parking. I don't know, does anybody know if that's taking place now? I mean, I haven't seen a public outcry like there used to be. There used to be meetings like this where you had, you know, 20 seats filled with local business owners, you know, concerned about their parking, because they was already having a real difficult time. Is that taking place now? Does anybody, has anybody heard anything from anybody? Do you get any complaints in the, in your department at all? So, you know, we're, we're in a time now, it doesn't seem like we have a problem at the moment. I mean, as we develop and as we grow, you know, we know there's limited space and we know there's that to be, you know, greater issues. But we just need to decide what our policy is going to be. Are we going to be pro-growth, recognizing that the type of growth here isn't going to be able to provide the parking and it's going to have to push its way out in surrounding areas? Or are we going to say, we don't, you know, we don't want that growth if they can't provide the parking?
Has anybody looked at the occupancy rate over the last four or five years? Because it looks like it's decreased in town. So that could be one of the reasons that we don't have that complaints right now. Looking forward, we're not sure, but I can tell you when I drive down, there's quite a lot of empty buildings.
In the downtown area?
That's right. Now certainly if these people, the developers, are able to develop their second and third floor properties, that would change the makeup. And most people who would live in those properties would probably want to have at least one car to get around town. It's something to think about.
So how can, how can we, if there's no more space downtown and you're increasing the occupancy of a building requiring more parking, how do you suppose we deal with that?
I always thought for, like, for the retail, the shopping, we've got those lots up there, the Skowhegan Plaza and the, or Tractor Supply, those lots are almost empty all the time. Would there be a way to maybe rent part of that and have a shuttle taking people from there to downtown to shop and eat or whatever?
Sorry about that.
I don't, yes, Amber?
Well, I think Andrew presented one idea, which is expand the distance that we will allow parking to be fulfilled. And the other way we could look at this is looking at time of use. So back when I was in my twenties living in Portland, you could only park in spots during overnight spots. When you got home from work, the presumption is that you might be getting up early and driving someplace to go to work. So we could look at time of use as well.
So, so that, you know, that goes into what was talked about, leasing, which goes into additional budgets, which goes, you know, you know, who are we, who are we serving? Are we serving the interests of the local store owners that need spots open during their business hours? Or the residents that are filling up the upstairs of these places that need, you know, around-the-clock type parking or at least during the off-hours? Yes, Jason?
I know we don't have a problem right now, but if you run into that problem, there is opportunities to change traffic patterns. And you could put two parking stalls in the stalls that you have downtown right now. Did a different traffic pattern. For each stall, you could put two cars in each stall and then diagonally. That's the way the town was designed to have back. You look at the old plans and stuff like that.
Would you still have two lanes going through there?
I think it was two lanes, but it.
They were tight?
They were tight. Backing or some other.
And that's still.
Hold up on that. I know how it was like that before.
So.
But it can be done, which would give you a lot of parking, a lot of parking.
And one thing that Ethan brought up too was, you know, why aren't people sort of parking and walking? And some of it could be as simple as signage. You know, we've had this conversation about six months ago. And then I walked around and looked at all the parking lots at different times of day, including during court. And the only people parking in the court parking lot were the staff. And they were pretty much using that row closest to the courthouse. And then there was one other car that I recognized as a neighbor's car from the next street over. So it was that parking lot, and Amber, you see it all the time when you go by. So maybe it's signage that says, you know, courthouse parking, something as simple as that. And then I think the other piece is, you know, the ongoing struggle of getting people used to crossing and getting people comfortable to cross. And I know it's a challenge for Jason to keep the, you know, crosswalk lights going and things, but, you know, simple things like that make a difference. And, you know, the experience for people to be able to cross. You know, and I think overall if people slowed down in town, there'd be people more apt. You know, I think of my mother, you know, she always talks about wanting to park or walk. And, you know, then she has one bad instance of trying to cross the street. She's not as adventurous as I am or doesn't carry a water bottle or a brick or something when she crosses. So, but, you know, those are things I think that can make a difference. And the other area where we've sort of struggled and it's a good conversation now with the select board, because some of these, you know, we can worry about sort of the money and the enforcement piece, but like, at some point, we're handing that off to you all, we'll come up with the ordinance, we'll do it on this side. But that next piece really sort of falls to you. And one of the struggles that we have is keeping track of, you know, who's using what in the public parking lots. You know, great example, when we were sort of in here trying to referee, you know, the new hotel and the Federated Church and figure out how people were going to park and when they were going to park. We were also giving credit and saying, okay, you can use, you know, 20 slots here, you can use 10 over here. But there's not like a running tally. So, you know, I pretty much know most of the cars just from walking around town all the time. And I imagine other people know. And, you know, when certain businesses let out, you see whose employees are leaving that parking lot. So you kind of have a good grasp of who's using what. If that parking lot went to the entire thing being two-hour, some of those businesses would have options to park elsewhere. Some of them would have to park a little bit further away. But some of the people that use the parking lot now, you know, they own space that, you know, employees are parking in that municipal lot. So, and even if you went to two-hour for half of it, you know, it would free up some space and maybe you don't have to enforce it right away.
Isn't the requirement that a lot of the Federated Church is a commuter lot?
It's a park and ride.
So people have to be able to park there all day?
I don't think we have a set number of slots there that I'm aware of, but maybe someone could correct me. I think it's just you have to have it available for a commuter lot. And that's, you know, there's another parking lot that's probably not, um, utilized to full capacity. You know, when you go over to that parking lot, you know, it, it's empty or, you know, it turns into that gravel lot. And I, I know a part of it belongs to the Tucksbury and the Federated, but, you know, maybe that becomes a priority to, to go in there and relay that out and, you know.
This parking lot right over here is open to most of the.
Yeah, yeah, that's right too.
That's a park and ride.
Yeah.
And then both sides of the street from there all the way up, right? If it costs Sunday morning, that's full, but any other time, there's never any cars there.
And maybe we'd get creative and put in some more on-street parking that's, it's a good way to slow people down. If I live where Amber was, I'd park in front of my house all the time just to slow people down. Works at my house for a while. I'm surprised Whitney hasn't tried it. It's a little harder where he is, but. You know, and it's, it's interesting because I, I think where we're running the biggest issue is the multifamily or the multifamily buildings. That one point five. So we could start there, we could do the distance, but.
And then like the, like the housing crisis too, right? Or maybe not a crisis, but you mentioned occupancy rate. And I think where we have our empty buildings is where we aren't allowed to rent them out, right? So where we do rent, they're full. I, I don't know if it was ninety-eight, ninety-nine, but it was really high. It's not easy to find an apartment in this town. So we definitely need more housing. And that's gonna be a trend. A lot of it's tradition too. You make some good points Jeff, but like people are just used to parking in certain places. You know, I have some lots around here and like, you know, they're full on certain nights of, of the week. If there's a dance going on, then the space parking lot is chock full. And that's okay, right? It's private parking, but it's okay. Uh, and the same thing. So I think a lot of people are just used to that. So you, like you mentioned signage, so, if we ever did to get to that, you know, crisis level. And maybe there's a, there's a chance for the town to make a little money off it too. You never know, right? Like, I don't know if you guys have tried parking in downtown Bar Harbor lately, but, um, there's an app for that, right?
So just, I, I'll just take a poll from the select. What's your general idea to loosen it up, to help development? Or do you still see that whatever development has to provide, a reasonable amount of parking as set by our ordinance that we have in place? That's, goes ultimately, you, you'll give us direction, we can come up with a language for something, we can give you suggestions, but you're the elected officials and you'll be the ones deciding whether or not such a, an ordinance or such a change goes to the town meeting. I'm just interested in what you're looking for. If you don't know yet, that's okay.
How often is this document revised? It's, I'm looking at it here now and I don't see any revisions or last time it was like that or.
You're only seeing two pages out of a whole bunch of pages.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I was looking, uh, there's a whole list of revisions, you know, probably, uh, ten lines long. I looked at it previously, I don't remember when the last one was.
I guess my question would be then, it, has the, has this gotten stricter over the years or is this something that is kinda ebbed and flowed as the, the needs of the towns has changed? Or is it just kept getting stricter and stricter and stricter?
The staff, do you know when this one was done?
It was, uh, last amended, uh, June of twenty-two.
But that doesn't mean that, you know, necessarily it was like drastically changed. It could have been something that we did to update it to follow state statute. So, but Brian, what do you think? Is that?
Yeah, I think twenty-two, that amendment was removal of the signage, sign permitting requirements.
So it's probably been around, probably my guess is.
Ninety-five.
Ninety-five, nice.
Yeah, there's been about ten amendments since ninety-five.
And I, I wouldn't say necessarily it's gotten stricter. It's, you know, and, and one of the things too, we didn't talk a lot about, cause it could spend a lot of time, we give variances to projects. Which is a mechanism if somebody requests a variance, but it feels weird that people come in and have to ask for a variance just right out of the gate for these projects.
Sure.
You know, one thing we talked about doing was like, do we just make it less restrictive in the downtown? But, you know, we haven't done that with too many ordinances, you know, they really are kinda townwide. We do, we do have some things that are like, you know, within the urban compact. But that line moves, so that's, you know.
Is this the number one inhibitor of people developing the downtown?
Brian's shaking, he said yes.
I would say yes.
He, he would probably know more because people inquire through the office that we may not even ever hear.
So it's, it sounds like we need, uh, e- either, you know, some leniency here or we need to figure out, uh, some new places to par- park people and, uh, transport them to and from their new residences or businesses or whatever it is. There's gotta be something that we can do to, to help promote that. Just gotta rip the cover off and see what we can see inside here.
So for, for every unit, you want one and a half cars? Is that for, for a residential unit? Is that?
Multifamily buildings, right now, that's what the ordinance says.
And multifamily is five units or more and then there's a table for what kind of business you are and how many spaces you need to have to serve your business.
Multifamily is five units or more.
Right.
So, I don't, I don't believe you can build any more than duplexes now when you're building new construction. So you're talking about just renovating these buildings and creating units out of the existing buildings, right?
We can't build anything bigger than a duplex?
Well, when I looked at what I could build up on Madison Ave, well, without sprinkler systems, I guess. So, but I mean, when you start looking at that, a sprinkler system is another deterrent for these investors. I don't believe that it's just the parking issue that is deterring them. And the fact that you just said that you guys could give variances if they were asked, it's the whole package. The investor's gonna look at the building and try to figure out if it, it's gonna fit into his investment and if he can make any money. And then he would go one step further. I don't necessarily know if we need to get into doing this right now since we don't really have anything going on. And since you guys are flexible and you could do variances, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I would just say what that creates Whitney is that the planning board gets to play lesser or, uh, or enforce the rules. And now you have an uneven playing field. And I think that, um, it's been, parking has been the sticky wicket for folks like Brian Eng that wanna develop, um, Pop Hall's Place into affordable apartments. Um, it's a constrained lot, there's a certain number of spaces. If we're not gonna allow him to park on the street, where, where are those residences gonna park? He needs to be able to meet that requirement by letting them park farther away, letting them use.
Which residence are you talking about?
Pop Hall, right, uh, on Court Street next to the Strand Cinema, the green and yellow, um, building.
Okay.
You know, parking was something that held that conversation up for quite a long time.
Okay.
We know we, we need housing in this community. We need affordable apartments. And so that's someone coming along trying to create a solution and being stopped by a parking ordinance that is, uh, restricted. So again, I raised the issue of, um, you know, time of use. If you have working people that are commuting someplace else, no issue to park in the public lot or in my lot. And, and even my pledge to allow them to use parking at night was met with, um, resistance at the planning board because he didn't own the one and a half spaces on his lot. It was a way of saying no. So that, that, that's creating tension in these kinds of problem-solving, um, developments that address the needs of the town and yet are being faced with a restrictive policy.
I, I don't think our ability to give variance is something that's unlimited. Brian, what can you tell me about the limitations on the planning board's ability to give variances?
I think, I think you guys have more than you think as far as being able to work with developers. It's just really what your, that's majority, what you guys are comfortable doing. Like we can do an annual fee for parking requirements. So folks who just come in and need one and a half spaces, they pay percentage of what it would cost to build that out. Uh, the town will put it into a reserve account, um, to purchase land in the future or whatever to create more parking, if that's what they choose to do.
Now, didn't we say?
Really, really allowing more use of municipal lots. I mean, it's, there's been some gear to take on that, but it's really been more of a wall put up on that front the last few years.
Didn't, didn't we say it, you know, that was, the idea of just paying a fee and then not having to provide parking would be, any developer would go with that, especially the fees that they were suggesting. Cause it, it basically meant they had little cost one time and they don't have to provide all this parking. So I'm of the mindset that where the property allows, we should try to force them to provide parking. Where it doesn't allow, give them an opportunity to use the property without the guarantee of parking, the market will determine whether or not it works for them or not. You know, if people won't come there because there's not parking, then, you know, the developer's not made a good decision. If, if he gets the right people and if the parking doesn't, doesn't matter, so.
It does potentially create a problem in the municipal lots for things like plowing.
Eventually, yeah.
Cause if they're gonna park there, it's gonna create the, the plowing problem.
How much, how much difficulty in the municipal lot do you have now?
Very little.
Very little, so.
We might have four or five a night when we're cleaning snow up. But most everybody days of the parking ban, no winner. But, uh, maybe four or five here, four or five there, you know.
Is that something you have to have them towed or do they?
Try to, the cops usually try to call the owner and knock on doors if it's someone's house or something like that or. But, uh, most of the time it's, they, they bump someone.
Brian?
If you look at all the vacant spaces in the downtown for development and they, you were to consider them to be residential developments, you're looking at a maximum, maybe forty total spaces that would be needed for, to develop the entire downtown. So I mean, you would know, you would know in the future if there was an issue, you needed forty additional spaces to alleviate that pressure.
I mean, I think having a parking problem is a good thing. It, it tells you that, you know, what we have is being utilized to the full. That's usually good for business, it's good for property owners, developers, everybody all around. You know, I'm not saying we don't think with forethought to make plans. That's why I think one of the big things that the selectmen should be doing is be on the, the watchout for properties that would be prime public parking areas as they become available on the market and have money set aside to snatch something up when it pops up. I mean, there's some, some places around that have bigger lots that could be utilized as, as parking. But, uh, personally, I don't see we got a problem yet. We could, yes.
Well, we do have a problem if we're stopping some development happening downtown, right? So, uh, parking problem is great if you have businesses and people living there and we're running out of space and everything is full. There's not a lot of vacancies, but if we have a ton of vacancies and we have parking problem, you know, that's a different game. So I think, you know, if we look at this ordinance, we should say like, how do we encourage development of our downtown, right? Because if those are, go to residential units, then we have that many more people strolling our downtown, spending money in our, money in our town, creating this kinda walkable area, encouraging business growth. Um, and then, you know, I just feel like development is, in this area is a good, is a good thing.
Do we have a lack of development because we don't have enough parking spaces or is it because of other reasons?
Well, do you think, if we just eliminated the parking restriction, do you think a lot of the developers would still go ahead and, and do the development because they know now they don't have to find this impossible thing? Was it's impossible in some?
That's, that's the question.
I don't think it has to be like contingent. I don't think develop, the lack of development may not be contingent on one aspect, such as a parking problem. But I'm also, I'm curious, you know, but if, but if it makes it more difficult, then you're gonna slow development, right? So just any, you know, so it's somewhere on that continuum. But in terms of a parking problem, like having too many, not enough parking spaces in the downtown, I, I almost feel like that's more of a fear or an anxiety, um, as opposed to a fact, right? We did, we had a parking study, um, and, and we could have another parking study, right? I mean, it's been a couple, been a couple of years, but, um, it seems like we should really just kinda look at the facts and try to make some decisions based on those. Hypothecizing and predictions, it's really great ideas to look at research and see what other towns of this size have done. And we can learn from that. But just to kind of, you know, yeah, I mean, I think just being real fact-based is important.
So was Bar Harbor better when you didn't have to use an app to park?
No, we didn't mind. We stopped, we stopped in and like, you know, we go to the restaurant and my son goes to the skate park for a minute.
So the question I'm bringing out is, it's a good problem for Bar Harbor. So we don't have the problem now. If we did have the problem, it would be good for us. And when we have the problem, we can figure out how to create some more space, so.
You know, I would say the one thing that we should avoid for any developer that comes in is running into those situations, you know, like Brian's project where they come here and the ordinances are not clear. Or it ends up not being necessarily a check, checklist that we work through with these developers. It ends up being sort of this horse trade. And then, you know, somebody decides that, you know, maybe they don't wanna do their next project here. They wanna go somewhere else, so, you know, that's a, you know, another piece I think of. Or, you know, we ran into this with the, the KB Cap project a little bit, trying to figure out the sidewalk. And, you know, we just were worried about safety, but it ended up sort of being this back and forth where maybe we didn't have all the tools or we were trying to figure out how to use the tools. And so, you know, if anybody's watching, it's, you know, you know, what type of community do we look like? You, you want people to be able to come in, work with the planning board, you know, you want the projects to improve, you know, from their initial proposal. But, you know, I just worry if, you know, we suddenly become, you know, too objective or, you know, we're making too many decisions. It's, it's a different experience for people that are coming in and, you know, it's not gonna be consistent from one developer to another, just, you know, by human nature in a sense.
And there's a lot of towns that are like really similar to our downtown, right? Like a Hollowell or an Augusta or a Gardner, like kinda really close to the river and, you know, very similar to what we have. So I'd be curious to what some of those guys are doing.
You have something?
Yes, my name's Janet Mayhew. And, um, where's the handicap parking downtown? It's.
Municipal lots.
In the municipal lots, where you have to walk a long distance to get to any of the places. So we're worried about all these people going further out and it's very hard for people that can't walk a lot to get to, like, I go at a certain time of day to go to my place to get insurance. After the school's let out, that I can just zoom up there because some days walking isn't great for me. I go to Joe's when I see a, when I see a parking, um, space open. A lot of people don't like the rotary, a lot of people have difficulty walking that distance. Those are the things I think as a person with difficulty, um, is hard on us now. Is that type of, our type of parking being that far away and not really having those quote, like one handicap here, one handicap there. Not tons of them, but just so that you can easily get to, you know, maybe just cross the road over here instead of going all the way back. I mean, it's great if I wanna go to Joe's, there's parking out back, but I can't do the stairs. So it's those things like that that are, people with disabilities are having a hard time with. Right? If you don't have it, you don't think about it.
It's, it's hard to accommodate an older system of buildings to a lot of these things. That's why we require them in all our new buildings, but it just, it doesn't work very well at all trying to accommodate it to something that was built long before the ADA requirements came around. It's just, it's a very.
But what I'm saying is, if you read me up in parking, when does ADA come into place? But, what I'm saying is, if you read me up in parking, when does ADA come into place?
Well, it's already, it's already part of, it's already part of the ordinance. So, there's a certain number of ADA, uh, spaces required depending upon the use. You're for any new building and, and, I mean, it's, I, I don't think there's any perfect answer to what we're doing. It's just, what are we, are we of the mindset that we want to create, uh, more activity? If we do, then it would be better to loosen up the requirements in the downtown area. Or, you know, maybe we ought to focus on like a checklist, some kind of process. If you're concerned about the planning board having, uh, too much power and their decisions being too subjective, maybe we should come up with a checklist that the planning board goes through. This is the steps we take. Anybody that comes to us, they face the same steps. You know, like I said, if, if the developer can provide it, they should. You know, now, the question is, what if them providing it means they're turning green space into impermeable surface? How is the necessity to reduce impermeable surface, how does it weigh against the necessity to need for parking?
There are very elegant solutions to permeable ways of parking, uh, that can be seen in other areas and then I'm sure our planning professionals can help, um, highlight for Scavenging.
I, I know that, like, the, the property you mentioned over there off of Court Street. There was some grass area there, but could it be, do they put parking in it, or do they keep it green? You know, that, that was something that come up in the discussion of that.
I think we made him use some of it for parking. Your building-
I mean, I agreed to give him some land, I g- I agreed to give him some parking. But I would also, you know, probably negotiate, you know, removal of green space with, who, permeable parking, impermeable parking? I'm not an expert on that by any means, so, um, but I, I would think like, if you're gonna destroy green space, then you probably wouldn't want to do that with, with asphalt that rain couldn't get through.
Does there anybody wants to add anything else on this topic?
I was gonna volunteer to work on this one. I think there might be other people. Maybe we get a volunteer from the select board to work on it.
Jason?
Jason wants to work on it.
If you, uh, eliminated that, the parking, what you said, you would need to set up a spot where you can put vehicles in the winter time. So, we're not, where these people, if these people have housing, they gotta park somewhere. We need to have a spot that we can tell them, you can park here overnight, so we can plow all these parking lots. And then, they have to be gone out of this area by a certain time, so we can take care of that area.
Can you do the same-
Cause we're gonna have that, that's what we're gonna run and do next.
Can you do the same thing by designating an overnight spot within the existing lot?
Well, I don't know about the existing lot, well, maybe like over by the church. We say, this way you can park overnight in the snowstorm. You don't have to walk from there or whatever, or, so we can get the downtown opened up. Then, we can take care of that after hours. Does that make sense?
That's what happens in other areas.
Right, apartments and stuff like that.
I just still don't know where you're gonna find that spot that you're-
Well, like, like I just said, you have like the church, like, that's ours, but we have our parking rights. We don't need to plow that. At night, we could open up the whole downtown and we plow. Then we can take care of that after, during the day.
I mean-
That makes sense?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, you know, something has to be done. You have to find some workable solution for that.
We're half, halfway there and I didn't even call a meeting. Parking subcommittee.
Okay.
I'd be happy to work on that, would be definitely, uh, if you organize something of the sorts, if that was-
Yeah, I'm happy to work on that, too.
Yeah, I was gonna volunteer here to work on it, too.
So-
Anybody else?
What are we doing? We're talking about a subcommittee here?
I think that's what happened. There'll be homework and we'll be in charge of bringing it in and our town planner and our contracted planner and our town planner and our code for, they're all involved.
Will, uh, is, uh, the chair of the selectman, is he mindful that we need a subcommittee on this?
I'm hearing what people are saying. I don't have a problem with it. Makes sense. Get the people together, make sure you got Jason and, uh, work it out.
So, reasonable to have two off the planning board and two off the select board? We have two, do we have two volunteers already from the planning board?
I think Amber and Elijah, you guys just volunteered.
Okay, so, and you guys are going to look for solutions and present them to the respective boards?
Well, we'd have to come back to our board to draft it. And then, when we get a draft, we'll, the select board gets there.
Sounds, sounds fine to me, so.
We won't put it off either.
Very good. I mean, it's, it's nothing wrong with having people going out and doing legwork and, and coming up with some solution. Whether or not everybody agrees with them, that's the thing to be determined yet.
Don't worry, I'm not, I'm not gonna get an app.
I'll take care of that.
Okay, why don't we move on to the next, the next item? Okay, that was the one from the selectman. Uh, that was, uh, about an hour, so. But it, it was something that we needed to discuss. Okay, from the planning board, we have, there's been a, a mention of a need for an overnight camping ordinance. I would suppose that's coming from our staff.
Yeah, that come from me. Um, it's been discussed over the last several months. Would it be great to have the chief here tonight because, you know, he's gonna be the one that's gonna have to enforce this thing. But, uh, it might be time to look at doing something similar to what Waterville's done. No camping allowed in public spaces. We've got a homeless population that is, it appears to be exploding, but it's really not. They're just moving around a lot more as we clean areas up, um, so we're just seeing them more. But we certainly don't want them in our public, public places and just trashing that. Well, we're gonna, we're gonna do something to get them out of here.
So, so we've talked about it and I, I feel like I've talked to some of the select board about this, just kind of offline. I guess I'm still confused with like our public spaces, I've always been under the impression that they close after dark. So, the public parks technically close. And in the past, when I was at Lake George, by having signage that the area was closed after dark, that appeared to give the mechanism for the police to move anyone out of that area or it gave them a reason to interact with people. Actually, I was having a bigger issue at the boat launch more than anything. And then the situation after I signed it, the state police actually stopped somebody and in that process discovered a whole host of other things. And then they just had to check and see if that was a rule. So, I was in the, under the impression that like our rec facilities, all of those things close after dark. But is that not enough of a mechanism that we'd have to go further to actually have any ordinance?
It isn't. My understanding is that the police department, if they get a call, they can trespass somebody, they're gonna give a warning. Those folks are coming right back.
Yep, okay.
There's just not enough teeth for them to say, okay, you're out of here, taking your stuff and you're, you're going, you're going now. Not three days from now.
And so, you, you know, I understand why we would institute this. I, by no means think this is gonna solve the issue. It's gonna move people probably onto private property, or it's gonna move people further or deeper. It was interesting, I was at a soccer game and I was talking to Joel Clement about this. Joel has the building on Spring Street in Russell and he and I interact a lot about that property and I often walk through at night and, uh, the site next door is a town property and it's been a problem, an ongoing problem. And I worked with the select board once to have it cleaned up. So, I just, you know, mindful that, that we can do this. I recognize, you know, it's, it's not the most compassionate thing to do, it's, it doesn't solve the issue. I'm fine with us instituting an overnight ban. I talked to folks in other towns that have done this. Uh, I was touring a property in Bitterford where they have some new signage and have a, a ban in place and, you know, gives them the mechanism to, to enforce it. I think the other piece I just warned there is, you know, down the road, I guess we need a mechanism to think about, you know, what the cleanup looks like. Uh, Jason, your crew cleaned up that site in the past, so, yeah.
What are you gonna do with them though?
Yeah.
They're homeless. You're gonna give them a fine? So, they end up in jail?
Yep.
They give them ride to go again.
I, I'm not being the-
They do.
Yep.
Hey, what are we gonna, what are you gonna do with them though? You're gonna get, what are you, gonna give them a fine and then what? Cause they've been pop, living in this area and making a mess? Then I have to go clean it up? I don't know where we go from making that ordinance. I hate you, I'm for you, making this ordinance, but, but where's it go from there?
It's a one step at a time approach. Right now, we know that our public areas are getting really defiled.
I agree.
Right? These are, some of our nicest places are getting ruined. Okay, right along the river, where people are taking their visitors, investors are coming over here. And when they see our public spaces trashed, they don't want to invest here. So, we need to take this seriously. Uh, we've cleaned up a couple areas. I can tell you over by the walking bridge, there was about five barrels of trash there. Needles, excrement, it's gross. So, I care about the homeless, but I also care about the residents that live here. And at this point, we need to think about our neighborhoods. And it's not fair to them to have their public spaces ruined. Same thing on Cedar Street. I just got, uh, two days ago, I got a bunch of pictures from another resident. Beer can beach, it's one of the most beautiful little beaches along the river here. And, uh, somebody just trashed the area, left all their stuff. They left their name and their SNAP benefits too, right there. I mean, i- if they don't have enough respect for our property, then what are we gonna do? I, I care about homeless, I care about the situation. But we've got to take care of the residents that pay taxes here. And they need to feel safe, otherwise people are not gonna move here. And if people are homeless, had respect for our property, they would pick it up, but they're not. So, I think that Waterville has a good solution. That's find them and maybe put them to jail. There's not a place for them in our public spaces right now. We don't have the infrastructure.
So, we thinking of like a vagrancy ordinance or, and is that what we're talking about? You know, more than just you can't camp out overnight on public property?
I, I would want to see a vagrancy ordinance. I'd want to study it first. I think that the overnight camping will deal with the immediate problem that we have. And, uh, we can come back and adjust as we need to. But it, this is a one step at a time approach.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm on the Watermill page, cause my daughter was moving back to Maine and so I got on that page to find rents for her. And there's a lot of talk about their ordinances and whatnot. And one of the big things is that they have it so that people can't camp in, in the places like parks and things like that. That was a good thing, but the biggest one that they've done is, they've added on and said you can't even pop up a tent in your, in your yard. If you want to pop up a tent for your kids to spend the night, a couple of days outside, it's not allowed. Because too many people are letting homeless live on their front doorstep after they put up this ordinance and they couldn't, couldn't do that. There's a lot of bleeding hearts out there that, that's gonna be the next step. I would hate to see that happen. I would, I would like if we did something like that to have like a time limit. You can't stay more than three days or something because every little kid wants to go out and camp in their backyard at some point in their life. Everybody maybe is redecorating their bathroom and needs to live in their camper for a week. No, they're not gonna do it more than two weeks or something. But there's gonna be those little things that help the person because that is their property, but yet don't allow the big stuff. But don't take everything away from the taxpayer too.
Yeah, I don't-
Cause that's what's happening.
I don't think this is talking about private property.
That's the next, that's the next step that happens. When you take them away from public places.
I think we start with public property and private property, you can make your own decision. Do you want homeless people camping on your front lawn?
Unless it's your neighbor and you don't want to let homeless people- It's just gonna snowmall is all I'm thinking.
I think like Whitney said, it's a one step at a time. We get them out of the public places, yeah, they're gonna find somewhere else to go. Then we, then we work on that issue. Eventually, we'll get like one step at a time, we'll, we'll get it under control.
We've already moved them up to Russell Road. Bottom, we're on the bottom side of the Russell Road.
Yep.
Right by that little barn.
Sorry, I don't need to laugh, but that's, that's Joel Clement's property, right?
Yes. No, it's on the other side, I don't have this-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they moved into his backyard.
He's thrilled, by the way.
Brian?
I think, I think the biggest issue we're seeing is not with longtime residents of the town Scavenging. These are mostly people that have never lived here before, that you're dealing with. And it's only one place in town where they're coming from. Why, why is that place accepting folks from out of state, out of town? Because they're getting paid, they're getting a check for a person coming into this town. That's the issue we're dealing with. It's not the people who were raised here, born here and lived here just fell on hard times. These are mostly people who are not from here. So, I think somehow we're gonna get, get to the bottom of it.
So, how do you deal with that?
I don't know.
Legislation or something as well.
So, so, so that, that is a whole funding thing?
Yes, absolutely.
There must be like guidelines on who can stay there and for how long. And I'm, I'm curious how, what their, um-
Can an ordinance be-
Vagrancy laws federally are unconstitutional, right? So, um, but towns can enforce variations of them, so.
What just happened with President Trump? He did something to clean up that mess, him doing that in the-
Well, it might not be unconstitutional now, but it was.
I think he fired the people that worked at the Park Service in DC and then he brought in the National Guard to work there.
No, but he, he did something that actually affected the ability of, of them to make encampments and, and all the stuff that we're concerned about. I mean, I don't know enough about it to know exactly what he did, but he did something that, that changed the game and allowed places to go clean up these messes. Yes, Brian?
The other thing is, we just had a case of this last week where our GA office received somebody, had a, had someone come in and was looking for assistance to get to Portland. What he stated was Portland paid him, paid a bus to get to send him to Scavenging. That's actually illegal, they're not allowed to do that, but how often is that allowed? So, it's not just the homeless shelter accepting folks, it's other towns, I know Corinville does it all the time. Even like Talabasie, um, but it does happen.
I guess the question is for Brian. Brian, what, um, ordinances or guardrails are in place to, to oversee the occupancy limits of a homeless shelter?
I mean, the, the building goes, the, the, the building was permitted through the fire marshal's office, um-
For how many residents?
I can't remember, I have to look at the plans. I do know, I mean, it's, it's up to, it's up to Aaron's discretion, something he's gonna have to deal with moving forward. But in the past, when Randy Gray was in that position, the governor sent the town a letter and said basically, the state's not stepping in to enforce anything on that property, leave them alone. So, the town washed their hands of the problem because they didn't get any support. So, that's another big red flag that we, we've been seeing.
How long ago was that?
This was twenty sixteen, seventeen, somewhere around that.
It went all the way to the Fire Marshal's Office. Fire Marshal's Office was just getting ready to step in and the governor shut it down.
Yes, ma'am.
So... Not only does the homeless shelter solicit people from out of Scowlhegan to come here, they physically take a vehicle and travel all over New England to bring people in. I, I don't know when the last time there was an inspection up there.
Are you, are you, I mean, a lot of accusations are being made tonight, and we're just assuming they're all true. Do you know this for certain?
I do know that.
Okay.
I also know for certain that two weeks ago, there were twenty women sleeping on the floor in the sanctuary of the church. And they had thirty kids, because my, my dad goes and delays there. They had thirty kids at one time. So we mainly just need to look at their occupancy. And I didn't think you were supposed to reside at a homeless shelter. I thought you were like hundred and eighty days, move them up, help them up. But that seems to be that they become residents and actually work there and do things. Really cheap help, I guess. I don't know. I'm not sure. That's what I'm getting when I ask around.
There's also an issue with bedbugs there. And I've been contacted by the Catholic Church in regards to that situation with one of their parishioners who was serving food. I think it's something that needs to be looked at. Certainly, um, if we have a rental property that isn't up to code, the code enforcement officer will deal with it. And I think at some point, uh, it should be determined whether the building is up to code. Because it would be inhumane to have those homeless there in that kind of situation.
Yes, Brian?
Um, I've personally been in that facility three, maybe four times, and not once have we found any violations. We brought the health officer in there on two occasions and never found bedbugs, even though someone said they were bedbugs. So it's, it's, there may be now, when we go, there won't be, who knows? But it's, it's not, I've never seen an issue. Is it somewhere I would live, let my family live? No, but everyone chooses to live differently, and I'm not gonna judge them for that. Um, but we've never found any issues. They're fully sprinkled. They've got all the requirements for an FDA mandate. Yeah, that's what I, that's what I've personally seen in the three or four times that I've been on that site.
So I mean, it isn't what's taking place there that's the problem. It's, that's a conduit to a lot of other bad activities that are detrimental to our town. I, I think a, a meeting between probably the selectmen and the people operating that facility should take place, and they should be no, it should be known to them, this, this is what's happening. This is the evidence. This is what's going on. How are you going to deal with it? Because, you know, it's, uh, making Scowlhegan the dumping ground of, of a, a bunch of other states or other towns is just, you know, it's not doable.
Then, once they're there for a certain number of days and they come in for general assistance, we are legally bound to give them assistance. So less taxpayer money going out the door, you know? And it's not, it's not Scowlhegan wanting to raise the people that need help. We shouldn't be helping them as much as we can. It's, it's the other folks that are better geared, sucking up the resources.
So, just getting back to the overnight camping ordinance, um, it sounds like we can pull one from Waterville. Take a look at it, see if we can come up with something, kick it up to the select board. This one seems like it would be quicker. You know, the issue of the, um, you know, shelter is definitely a more complex, ongoing piece. Probably not the last we'll hear of it. You know, I think from us is, you know, really is it up to the code side? I would agree with the chair on that suggestion to have the select board meet with those folks operating it. And, you know, maybe it's an occupancy thing. I think anything from twenty sixteen, we probably want to look at that and kind of revisit that, but probably that's null and void and, you know, if we wanna, town wants to go after it again and...
Yeah, there's nothing, I mean, we can, we can do what we want. We, we are the authority having jurisdiction. It's just, when we need that support, it helps to get the state's support when you're-
Sure. Yeah, no, I get that.
If you don't have the support, it's, it's a struggle.
And then the only other thing I'll say is that, you know, when, when they originally were using just the church, and it was a code violation that caused them to go, there's a lot of people in the community that were supportive of building that building. And I've never forgotten that. You know, it's, it was a situation where, you know, citizens and businesses stepped forward. There might have been some other money, but there was a lot of local initiative to support them in building that. And, you know, if things have gotten out of hand, I guess it's an important thing to have a conversation, but, you know, I remember when people donated to build it, and I think there was people at that time that were concerned about not having the support services and the wraparound services, which there are not, to support those folks that are living there.
Okay, so we will concentrate on an ordinance to deal with the, the, uh, camping overnight in public spaces. We'll look at some of what other towns have. We'll move on to the next one, property maintenance ordinance. Who wants to, uh, I know Whitney was interested in changing this. Do you have any suggestions, or you just recognize there's a problem?
So I, this is a tough one. I know how people feel in town about their independence and their property is their property. And for the most part, I agree with that. But we have some properties in town that are so badly taken care of and so just trash everywhere that they're lit, and they're, and these are small lots. It's, these are, what, eight to ten thousand lot, uh, properties in town. So somebody else next to them takes care of their property, and then this person has ruined the property. It's devaluing their property. It's unfair to their neighbors. So I think that there's gotta be a basic, uh, property maintenance standard. And I know that's like very subjective in some terms, but I, I think that it's important when people drive through our neighborhood that, you know, it, it looks like a nice neighborhood, and when ninety percent of it looks good, but the other ten is trash, it, it doesn't help. Uh, so I, that's it. I'm looking for a basic standard. I'm not looking for a Kidery or Old Orchard Beach or anything like that. I, I could name, everybody knows some properties around town here that are just, they've been ruined, uh, for years. Janet brought up a perfect example at the last select board meeting. And it, it's been a junk for the last ten years that I've known it. And it's never picked up. And it's, it's not fair to the neighbor.
Is, is this an ordinance issue or is it a enforcement issue?
It's not-
I've read this ordinance, and it looks like it's got just about everything in it you, you would need to deal with those situations.
According to Brian, you said that it was not sufficient enough to enforce around town?
That's not, that's not entirely true. Some, in some cases, yes. Uh, but this ordinance, we, we revamped it twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. It's got enough teeth to do things. The issue is, just like with any law, the one that Janet mentioned at the last select board meeting, unfortunately with that property, I was told by the town's attorney that they picked up enough, the judge will never, he will never sign off on an abatement order for the town to go in there. Maybe things have changed, but that's why we left that property alone. That's not an enforcement thing. I wanted to keep going after it, clean that property up. I was advised by the town's attorney to back off.
So that, that's the problem. So I don't, I don't know how we can fix it, but if we're gonna allow properties like that to stay like that in town, we're not gonna get anywhere.
I will, I will say too, there's a misconception of that property in particular. Everyone says that there's rats in the area because of that property. That could not be further than the truth, because when I really saw a waste facility, I saw those in the nursing homes trash. There was human feces and diapers. That's why there's rats over there. Yes, there is garbage on that gentleman's property, and the rats are likely hanging out, living there, but there's no food for them. The food is coming from the other properties, so it's one of those things you get the complaints, but then you see things on the other side. It's like, that's not the full picture, guys. So when you're hearing complaints about rats, let's make sure we're getting the whole picture, not just parts and pieces.
I didn't say anything about rats.
Me, I-
That's, that's been the number one complaint since I got here, a rat issue. And I've never seen a rat over there, not one time. Um, but I told them, they threw, they throw human diapers in their trash, and they end up in the recycling, end up in the solid waste facility inside the recycling bin, so.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the lady that made the complaint at the last meeting. Janet, may you? The property that I was talking about is by Cedar Ridge, and the gentleman owns three other properties in town. He's a collector of junk. One time when I went by there, there's two cars there with no stickers on them, so they're not registered. So that's, I think, uh, maybe it's three cars that you can't have for an unregistered junkyard. I don't know. So he's right under the wire with two. And then his fence is like falling down. He has to have boards to stick it up because you need to have a fence, right? But it's, you can see all the garbage. One time when I went by, he had tin in this great big dumpster, about as big as that table there. He had tin in it and, um, iron and stuff. The, I just took my aunt to the nursing home a couple of weeks ago for rehab, and I went, and it's got wood in it. What he does is he must go to different places and collect things, and then he turns it in or whatever. So he's basically skirting the wire for an unregistered junkyard. It's, it's sad that, that's what you see when you go into a facility to drop your elderly parent off. I just, I just think it's sad that they have to see that, for one, and he's got two other places in town. And all one kingdom, I heard. So if you all put them all in one spot, it would be a junkyard.
So we haven't been to the property since that correspondence with the town attorney. We could certainly go take a look at it and see if it meets, meets parameters of a property maintenance ordinance. And, you know, take enforcement action if we, if we mind that, that we can. So it's not, it's not that we're not willing to do it. It's just, in a lot of cases, it's-
What, now, is this, is the situation here, the guy just doesn't care? The guy can't, or is that his life? He's just collecting this and that? Does it stay there once it comes, or does it go, some of it go away? What, what's hap-
He's a local builder, so when he does a project, a demolition project, say there's windows and doors, he'll haul those things home. And then he'll resell them at some point for a house project.
If you put a vinyl fence around it, probably nobody would even care, but it's, uh, I saw.
I think that would be appropriate for him to at least fence it in, but, you know, in this situation, I don't want to bring out addresses of residents right now. I don't, I don't think it's fair to do. I almost wish we had a big van so we could go take a drive in the afternoon. So we could all get a, a consensus of, you know, what's over the top and what's not over the top. In regards to the property she's talking about, I believe the code enforcement officer before Brian, several years ago, did get him to pick it up a bit, but it just, just goes back. It eventually gets back to the way it was before.
Yes.
So Whitney, this ordinance is pretty extensive. Do you think it's an ordinance issue or an enforcement issue, back to the prior question?
It's an enforcement issue. As I, Brian, I would ask you, is this, uh, have enough teeth on it for you to enforce anything?
It does. Um, we tried to push for more back when I brought this to the board, but that's, that's as much as I could get in an ordinance without it being too, in their opinion, too restrictive.
So what, so that was the previous board? So could you bring those back to us at some point so we could look at them and discuss them?
Yeah, I mean, we'd bring it to the, to the planning board, just like we did the last time.
Sure, yeah.
Eric? So, I have a question on that. If we bring it back and we go over this, where, where is the board, the select board's appetite to clean these properties up? Because there's a line that we can only enforce so much. We're dealing with a, with another property in town. Uh, I will list the property, but the town has been on this property already, and we have yet to assess liens. We have yet to set a foreclosure process. We're dealing with the court right now. We're dealing with the town's attorney right now, and they've already been made to clean it up once. Uh, we have done the house as of last week, um, and we're right back where we started. So where, we can say all this and we can put it here, but where do we enforce it? Because it comes to my office, and we only have so much that we can legally do. So we can talk about it, but where is the town's, where is the select board's appetite? Because the next step is to come in front of the select board, which is see at what point do we continue to spend money on these places?
If it's money we don't have-
If it's infinite, then, then we'll continue to go down, down the line, and we'll keep going.
But you've already spent money on these places.
We've already spent money on them, so when, are we gonna keep spending money on them? Because then it relies on picks and chooses on which properties that we, we push this on and which ones we follow through on. And therein lies the problem of we can't then pick and choose which ones we want to follow. So we either follow every single property that doesn't mean more than the ones that are really bad.
So I know exactly the property you're talking about, and that is a huge issue. We need to figure out how we go forward with that. If the town put in money to fix that up, there sure, there certainly should be a lien on it, and the lien should be enforced at a certain point in time. And if the town has to put more money in to fix it up, that's another lien. And at some point, the town should be owning that land, if the owner's not gonna fix it up. It's absolutely unfair to the rest of the neighborhood, neighbors in that neighborhood for that place to look the way it is.
To give some more context to that, we're, we, on that property, we were probably favored by the position, so the money we dump into it, the mortgage and company is first. So they, you know, and if we start, we need to start the foreclosure process, but that's a three-year process. In the meantime, you know, we used, we used ta, uh, sale of town property to clean up two or three properties so far. That fund is dwindling. So we're, we're running out of money that we can find and scrape to, to clean these properties up. We, we, if we, if we had, you know, a bunch of money sitting somewhere, or whatever that number is, we could certainly go and clean these places up, but, you know, if you take that enforcement action, you just know when you step on the property that they're not gonna clean it up. I'm gonna, Aaron, not me anymore. Aaron will have to come to the select board and get permission to take legal action. Go through that process. That's, you know, three to four thousand dollars. And then the judge says, yep, the town's got the authority to clean it up. Then we're gonna find the money to clean it up. That property's thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars that we spent on. So on top of the ten thousand dollars that we spent on Butler Street.
So we're gonna do that again?
So-
Should we add it again?
So this is the issue that we have to sit down. Certainly, it would be good to sit down with the town manager. And we, we're gonna have to just brainstorm about this and come up with a way that doesn't allow people to trash their property and, and leverage it up to the point that, you know, it's breaking the town. But if we leave it the way it is, all the neighbors, the other twenty people living on that street, it's not fair to them, and they're not, they're not gonna want to live there.
The houses are closed. All it takes is to burn one, you have two houses burned.
Yeah.
The houses are closed for this one.
These, these people know we don't have the money to clean it up, so they, they're gonna drag their feet. We have a fund sitting there that we can use. They're gonna start snapping to it.
So the question is, how can the planning board help? So I, I would say-
So I didn't know the complexities of this until now, and obviously, it's gonna take a lot of thought.
What if, what if we worked it so the homeless problem that we have helps deal with the, the problems of properties that need cleaned up? helps deal with the, the problems of properties that need cleaned up?
There you go.
I think you're, on this scale, this is a property that required quite a lot of trash removal, so it's...
Well, it's worse than ever, once again.
Yeah, it's...
We just spent two hundred dollars on the code enforcement budget to board it up the other day, because we got an administrative warrant, which is the first one the town's ever got, to order to get back on the property, to get inside and to get done with it. So where do we go from here, I guess, is my question.
So there was people inhabiting the house again?
Yeah, and we had, and we got an operation today that's going back through the lawyer and the court. We have to give her an avenue to get back to their house. We don't own our house, we haven't started the foreclosure process. So, where, we, we have this ordinance, but there, there's teeth to say to, to enforce it, to oppose, you know, fines and stuff like that, but past that, I think where our hands are tied.
So is this a state issue?
No, it's not.
Can the state, you know...
No, this is, this is a town issue, not having a fund to step aside and clean these properties up.
But, but as far as the legal, the legal aspect of it, where it doesn't work?
Yeah, it's, it's due process.
Is that state, or is there some federal aspect?
State, federal law, I mean, due process, I, which, you know, I think everyone has a right to. We gotta go through the process, and it is what it is. It just comes down to, how much money are we gonna put up to keep cleaning these properties? Because they're habitual offenders, they're gonna keep doing it, doing it, doing it.
Why does the town's people want to pay to clean up someone else's house?
Well, I think to Whitney's point, it's because of the neighborhood, and protecting the neighbor's investment.
If you lived there, you wouldn't wanna live there. It's, the thing is, any one of us wouldn't wanna be that person's neighbor, and at that point, something's gotta be done. Do we need to spend thousands of dollars on it? No. And, again, I have never gotten into all the issues related to the problems here, but there must be a way that something can be done, that doesn't involve spending thousands of dollars. Yep, it'll just take more research on how to do it.
Like, the only, the only thing we can save money on is labor, like maybe equipment. If Jason had the time when we needed them, that's the biggest issue.
Sorry, you had money?
He's got a little money.
We're running pretty thin here.
You know, the town, we're gonna, we're gonna pay for the dumpster, and the tonnage to go to waste management regardless.
I think you could get community help, but you'd have to know that the person's not allowed to go back in there and do that again, they're, they're done at that point.
I don't know if there's a legal avenue where we could say, you can't go back on your problems.
Right, if it's condemned. If the property's condemned, how can they go in there?
If it's condemned, yes.
Has it been condemned?
It, it is by the town's regulations, but we were informed that we have to give them an avenue to clean it up on their own to get back in. So if they need A, they get B. If they need A and B, they get C, and that is by the court system. We do not own the property, we have not started foreboding, the bank has positions on it before we do. It's a mess, but where do we, we can keep following it? I just worry that we, we add too much more to it before we figure out the problem that comes at the end. Most people aren't good enough in, in the cert route, and they realize, you know, that the circumstances of the property got that way, we're very understanding with it. Very, quite a few cordial face-to-face conversations have happened in the last few months with myself, and, and most people are, are generally gracious to get, you know, time to clean it up. There have been a few that don't, to the point of where we will condemn it, and they, they do just enough to keep it open, so I mean, it's a good... It, it seems to work the way, the way it is, is what I'm saying, but, but before we try and change the stuff that's in it, how do we enforce what's already here? Because we don't have an avenue, once we get past that, to enforce it. We went to the court, we got our answer, we boarded up, where do we go from here? Why are we spending money on it in front of the code enforcement budget? Because that's the only option we have at the time, and, because we've never had them work before. And we did it, and we thought it was the right thing to do. We have little kids living next door, we have elderly living next door to that, and we're running a house on generator, and cords are running all through the trash, and then in the yard. So if that goes up, even the fire's here. If it goes up during the day, it's a hard problem. If it goes up at night, there's a lot of people that aren't coming out. So we didn't, we need to at the time, but until we find a way to deal with what we already have, I'm just giving you a point of view from my seat in my office, that how do we continue? How do we enforce more when we can't enforce what we already have?
Isn't that a safety issue?
I was just saying, public safety issue. I think that it's gonna take several departments getting together, definitely, it would, the town manager and, uh, the town lawyer, and lay out the options, and then go from there. But obviously, it's complicated. So, we'll just put it on the back burner and figure it out.
I would, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say we're gonna put it on the back burner, though. It's something that, this is, this is one of the reasons why I proposed the structural change with the two offices and combining them, and that hiring a new code officer who can focus one hundred percent on the job, not fifty percent here, twenty-five here, twenty-five there. He's gonna have, he's got more time to, to really hone in on these things, and it's gonna benefit the community, so. It's, it's working so far, and we'll continue to build on that momentum. But, this, this is, this is a big issue that we need to get ahead of, and it's something I'm not gonna let go.
Good, because back burner's a bad, bad phrase. We, it's just not something that we're gonna be dealing with tonight. But I do think it needs to be dealt with, and I certainly will get with department heads to figure it out.
I know we can't do this tonight, but I wanted to get to the topic.
Yeah, it's, it's been on my mind for several months.
I just feel it was every day, that you as a whole need to hear from.
Okay, you can bring it back to us when you think there's something we can do about it.
Okay.
This was a good unifying moment when we got the property maintenance ordinance done. It's like, the left and the right on the board have really joined forces against Brian. It's like, Brian was in there trying to make it all, taking people to freedom.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, the sewage ordinance. Uh, needs an update to meet EPA DEP standards. Who wants to speak on that matter?
So, currently, we're, I have Oliver Associates, they're here to run, writing a special permit for Giffords. Uh, we've been dealing with treatment issues with Giffords. They have no industrial pre-treatment. They've been advised by DEP to create an industrial pre-treatment plan. Our ordinance isn't strong enough, but there is writing in there about issuing a special permit, so that's the avenue that we're taking. We need to get that done now. Uh, we wanted to rewrite the ordinance and then do the special permit, um, but the way that the ordinance will have to go for the town, we needed, we were directed by the DEP to issue the special permit this year, so. There's a time constraint, we're working on that. But anyway, the reason we have to write a special permit is because the original ordinance is not strong enough, and probably have Oliver Associates rewrite the ordinance for this spring, getting into a vote for the spring, spring vote.
So, you would issue the special, or who?
We're, we're directed by the DEP to issue a special permit right now, we're working on it, and we're issuing that special permit because our current ordinance isn't strong enough to hold Giffords liable.
And then in addition, I'm sorry, go ahead. I was gonna say, in addition to that, I'm assuming the structure they're gonna need is probably gonna need a shoreline zoning permit as well?
I'm not sure about that, but, um...
If, if they, if they do pre-treatment on site, and it's within the shoreline zone, it's likely gonna have to be the shoreline zone?
Yep.
Then they would certainly have to be coming before you folks for that permit.
Basically, McDonald's has a grease trap, that's pre-treatment, and Giffords has an ice cream plant, and there's zero pre-treatment, it's a grease trap. Ultimately, our permit, when we violate, it's our permit, so it's up, the DEP told us that it's up to us to hold Giffords liable. We're currently working on that, we have a draft. Um, Brian and Aaron and I are all gonna have a meeting this month, and it's also a good opportunity with Aaron coming on board, and everyone getting settled in their positions to get this new special permit and, and enact it, and, and have fines in there, and hold Giffords liable, so.
For, for any industrial use of it, I don't know.
So, what's our part?
Um, give us the blessing to rewrite the ordinance, um, and if anyone has anything that they'd like to put into it.
It will have to be reviewed by this board.
Absolutely, yeah.
Rewrite it, you can present it to us. We've gotta have the opportunity to review it for the town's sake.
Yeah, there, there's a lot, I mean, overall, the, the ordinance is pretty good when it comes to describing hookups and, and the dimensions of sewer system, and there's a lot of technical data that's good, but there's a lot of stuff, there's probably thirty percent that we need to, we need to rewrite. There's like groupings of, um, residential is grouped with commercial, that's, that's not a good... Commercial should be grouped with industrial, when it comes to strength of waste. So everything is about protecting the infras, this ordinance needs to protect the infrastructure, the collection system, and the plant. And currently, right now, it needs to have better descriptions of strength, who is producing that strength, volumes, to better protect the system, and, and there's just some things missing in there. And that's why we had to go out of our way to get a lawyer, to get an engineering firm, to expand on our current ordinance, because it's, it's not strong enough, so.
So, timeline, I'm just trying to think, because we will wanna schedule it so we have an opportunity for at least a public hearing, and would wanna get it...
Absolutely, we, well, we'd like to get it rewritten for this spring, so from now until then, that the town comes together, um...
So probably we just refresh our guide, our timeline.
Give it to us by March.
Sure.
When, when's the town meeting gonna be next year?
June.
I thought they were moving it, no?
We was talking about, I don't know where, there's, there's new board, I don't believe, has discussed that, so.
Are, are we gonna look at maybe doing things a different way, as far as our, how we do sewage, and, and how we charge for that in this town?
That is one issue, is there's fees associated in the ordinance that can't be changed, because they're in the ordinance, and those fees are twenty years old, and they're not representative of the work that Jason does to hook up a new, um, a new setup. So we're losing money on that end. The other end is the description of users, and, and the strength, and how much they can impact the system. So you have the, you have protecting the system at the plant, and then protecting Jason and, and his crew with the amount of money that the, the people that were putting in a tap or something like that, and it costs the townspeople so much money. It's fifty bucks. Because we're not charging you now. We're paying our crew to do it, and... So currently, it's not protecting, and we're losing money, so. We need to seriously rewrite it, yep.
Isn't there a seventeen-hundred-and-sixty-dollar hookup fee?
There is, yeah.
And that's not enough?
That, that doesn't have to, there is a tap, there's an associated tap-in fee. That's what I'm talking about, there's a fifty-dollar tap-in fee, and that's what his crew gets paid to go and do, and that's at least a half fee, or, um, and as in, there, those new hookup fees should go up, but not that much. It hasn't been changed in quite a while.
Why don't you add the tap-in fee to the hookup fee?
Well, that, that all, the point is, the fees have been buried in the ordinance, they need to be removed from the ordinance, and they need to be adjusted to twenty-twenty-five.
So, in essence, they'll be two separate, they'll be, the fees will become...
We, yes, and then also, we need to embed, well, we need, we need to pull the, the fees out, and then the DEP is also instructing us to, um, incorporate charges and fines, and there's nothing in there about that, so. It's for violations.
But, but those are land use violations, and we do have a fee structure, it's just not explicit in the ordinance, whether or not the ordinance is...
Yeah, and I believe you have to go to court for that, so we need to, we need, we need to hold, we've been instructed by the DEP to hold people monetarily, um, responsible for violations, so.
Lyte?
Yeah, I just, like in other, um, lines of business, I've been struggling with like verbal agreements and contractual agreements, and when you mentioned that the DEP is instructing the town to do certain things, are, do we face any liability if, you know, something goes terribly wrong?
We're being instructed, so. We're, we're, we're in the zone, right? So the, the DEP instructs until they don't, and then they tell you.
Then we get the fine.
Yes.
Okay.
So the answer to that would be like, DEP could fine us right now, if they wanted to.
We're, we're unofficially being encouraged to rewrite our ordinance and hold Giffords liable. And then Giffords isn't the only user, you know, so.
Is liability the wrong word, if there's a huge spill into the Kynect River?
Well, um, it comes through our system, and we're liable, so.
Okay, so it's a fine.
When I have a violation, I call the DEP, I don't call Giffords.
Right, okay.
So, it's, we're at the end of the line, so we need to protect the system. Uh, we can be fined daily by the DEP for violations from Giffords, so.
So is that, is next spring soon enough?
Um, yeah, so, we need to get it done, I mean, in, in a good, in a, not rushed, we want to make a good ordinance for this town, and give everyone the right amount of time to review it and change it, and, um, but I think we should do it as soon as possible, so.
Those special meetings in the near future?
And we can create some special meetings, or, because we're, we're gonna have to totally rewrite it pretty much, so.
Nothing that, you have any plan for, anything else you need a special meeting?
I mean, Donnie, you're gonna run it through and come up with an ordinance, and then I thought it would go to you, right? Isn't that what you're talking about?
I can have something in March.
I mean, we're talking about March, just so we can go through the process to have it ready for June.
Yeah, if that's what you...
Like, like March is like the, the end of the time it should be done.
Well, give me an appropriate timeline, and I can talk to all the people we're paying.
So have it to us on the first Tuesday of March?
Sure.
Or sooner.
Or sooner.
Sure, I can tell them.
That's providing we don't go through and pick it apart.
Yeah, well, we'll, that'll be a good goal to set up, but...
Just, just keep in mind, though, that these are EPA standards that we can't pick apart, so.
Well, the, the standards are the strength, but then the way we set up the fines, the way, that way it can be easy for you guys to go and administer them, and, and we can work all that out, and, um, so.
Is this gonna require additional funding?
Where, it's already requiring additional funding.
I know, but we've already passed that, right, when we did the Oliver study? Or is this something else that is gonna come up?
No, this is ongoing, this has been, Oliver was brought on when we were violating, we had fourteen violations last July, um, and we brought the town manager and the superintendent, brought Oliver Associates in as a third party to help negotiate with Giffords and help fix this whole problem. So this is the tail end of that process, and if we can write this special permit, and we can write this ordinance, we'll, we'll be done with the legal counsel and the engineering counsel of, of Oliver, so. We're, we're nearing the end, it's been about, um, a year and a half, so.
And, and Giffords has voluntarily worked with us on this, they're not, they're not really dragging their feet on anything just so that everybody's aware. And they, they've happened to be available to work with us on this and help us find work.
And, and there's other, other users in town that are taking advantage of our current ordinance commercially, and we, everyone needs to be on a level playing field, so. And, and the level playing field is the EPA, um, strength levels that are allowed at play, so.
Thank you.
We'll move on. Next one's solid waste ordinance, trash complaints and enforcement issues. Cindy, is this coming from you?
Some of it.
Some of it, okay. Anybody else here to have something to speak about on this particularly? Cindy, it's yours.
Uh, the last time that the solid waste ordinance was amended was two thousand and two. It needs some serious updating. But I'd like, also like to request to have another workshop with the select board as well. regarding what we had discussed at the previous workshop, but now we have a new board. Um, in regards to what we're paying for, for trash in this town. And I've been making many trips to the landfill in Norwich Lock and I have pictures if anybody wants to see them. We are paying for so many recyclables to be thrown away and that burden's on all of our taxpayers. Um, we're one of the, about the only town I can find that still pays for all residential and all commercial trash within the town. We're over six hundred thousand dollars this year in budget and the prices are just going up every year. I would estimate, this is in the next five to ten years, we're gonna be paying over a million dollars just to throw away trash. Um, so if we want to keep doing it, that's fine, but the budget's just gonna keep going up and perhaps we could find a different way to, to make this more fair for all taxpayers as well. So I would like to request that of the select board, um, to set that up as soon as possible. And I look forward on what I have found. But within the ordinance, I don't know if you all have a copy of it, there's a lot of outdated stuff in here and I went through to mark some of it, just to start thinking about, um. Um, on page five, just updating the list of the recyclable materials and how they need to be separated. Things have changed over many years since two thousand and two on what we take, it's not be taken in now because of, you know, the selling of the recyclables, um, the people that want to purchase them. They change their minds quite often on how they want to receive them, so just updating that. And I'd be happy to work with you guys, planning board and stuff, just to get that updated. Um, and right for the old adage, it does say no salvaging is permitted except provided in the rules and regulations. I know for COVID, we didn't shut down anybody taking any materials from there. Um, and since COVID, I am all about reuse, okay? If there's wood down in the woodpile, I want people to take it. We pay to get rid of that, you know, if they can use it for a purpose, not to create a junkyard hopefully, but if they can use it for a purpose, I don't see a problem with that. I have a little free area set up, so if you drop off usable items, usually they're gone by the end of the day because somebody else can use them. Um, so just maybe updating that with certain guidelines, you know, don't plundering on the woodpile, no surfing around in the glass pile, um, just for safety. No power tools.
Well, we're about.
Yes, um, so maybe just updating that with certain guidelines to make sure everybody's being safe about that.
That would be my concern is that there's a liability there for someone that's gonna be taking wood out of that pile. What if they pull it out of the bottom of the pile off now?
We keep a close eye on them, I can actually zoom right in if anybody's down up there. And I keep a, a very close eye on it. Most, I can put up signs that say you can get your own risk as well to help cover. Um, or if you would perform more coverage, we can have people sign a waiver. Um, that's always an option as well if they'd like to take materials from the woodpile, just to make sure we're covered.
Right.
Somebody's going down there with sneakers on, they step on a nail, it's gonna be a big deal. So a waiver or something to protect the town's liability.
That's no different than somebody goes down to throw stuff away.
I, I'm just saying, as long as we're protected.
Maybe you ought to have the waiver taken care of when you get your permit.
Mm-hmm. Yep, and we can certainly set that up, we're gonna have stickers coming out, um, probably by November. And we can certainly set that up, um, I can put plenty of signage up, if you're gonna take items, you need to sign a waiver and we keep those right on top of them, so. Um, that's not a problem, I'll do whatever you guys would like, but that is just part of recycling. And if we're gonna pay to get rid of this stuff and somebody else can use it, that's a good option.
I feel like we should get a badge.
Huh?
Those of us that pick the wood piles should get like a badge. Just watch a video, I'd be down for that.
You wouldn't believe.
We'd have nothing left.
People get done a project and they show up for any longer than.
Got a nice orange there, actually.
I'm seeing you down.
Question for you was, um, in regards to listing all these things out, do you think it's appro- there's probably a better way of doing this rather than listing it all out, just like pulling them out, is that what you're thinking or just like?
Finding a different way, um, of doing it, because that part is within the ordinance. But there is a separate section that is the rules and regulations, which the select board can actually modify at any time.
Right.
So whether it be moving it to the rules and regulations to make it easier, because if all of a sudden we don't have a market for a certain material, we have to stop taking it, like, can't take ashes anymore, you know, um, then the select board could actually update it instead of having to wait for another town meeting, so that is an option.
Because their rules and regulations allows them to set the fees as well.
Exactly.
Which could be a good model for the sewage ordinance, that they are then in charge of setting the fees.
And then the select board can actually change those at any time if that's what they want to go through a town meeting.
We, on the other hand, the citizens like the idea sometimes that when we vote on something, this is what it's gonna cost. And not find out, you know, the, a board, whether the board's good or not, I mean, it's irrespective of that, you know. A lot of times when something is in hard language in the, the ordinance, it is a protection for the people that voted for it. You know, wouldn't it be nice to, to know they can't raise your taxes because they have to come to you and, and you got to vote on it and this is how much the taxes are? It'd be nice if we had something like that.
I get a pretty good.
If you're looking at keeping a budget going in town, your perspective is different. But, uh, so if you're wondering why people might like to have it actually in the ordinance, that's the reason why.
Well, the fees aren't in the ordinance, just the list of materials. Because technically, we have been working for many years to take all numbers, be like costs, certain fees that, for permits and stuff like that, out of the ordinance and just have it within the fee schedule. Because if a cost of something goes up, we're gonna wait a year. Um, and we're gonna absorb that extra cost, or if he has to change his fees for highway or pollution control or something like that, technically, we have been working over the years, even when I was in the program enforcement office, to get any actual fees out of the ordinance and with, only within the fee schedule. Um, that's been going on for many years, so. Um, but I don't see any fees within the ordinance, all of our fees are within the rules and regulations, which definitely need to be updated as well, um, within this ordinance anyway.
Anybody else have, yes?
Just a couple of questions for Cindy, I, I mean, the ordinance reads clear that recycling is a requirement.
Mm-hmm.
Right, to use the transfer station.
Mm-hmm.
The, the section on the back, page, page ten, it says, um, things will be deposited in trash bags that are transparent enough to allow for visual inspection.
Mm-hmm. That's not, that doesn't happen, that's not enforced, right? You can't find clear bags, but what, what's the word too, but you wouldn't believe the amount of black contractor bags that you can't see what's in them.
Yeah, and, and then, and then it's clear that you have a right to inspect. How often are you inspecting household trash? I mean, I know you alerted us that you'd be inspecting some municipal, um, uh, commercial trash recently.
Well, the thing is, is the loads that I'm checking at the landfill and waste management, it's a mixture of residential, commercials, whatever is on the hauler's schedule. It could be a mixture of whatever.
So what does enforcement look like? So you're chasing down the truck when you have a chance to tear open the bag?
Pretty much, you're spending every day, all day up on top of the landfill checking every load that's spilled to Skaki. Or ripping open everybody's bags that come up to the transfer station, so that's, that's about the only way you're truly going to enforce it.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, yeah, so that's something I'd like to talk about.
Yeah.
Jump with the select.
I, I will say Cindy's presentation to the select board last year was extremely informative. I would love for you to do it again, you have great data to show what we're paying for and, um, our costs are just gonna keep going up and we are locked into increased rates already. We're not gonna change them at this point. And, um, you know, I think we're, we're talking about enforcement through, you know, carrying a stick or how do we incentivize people to recycle from the get-go? And I think there are some creative solutions and we're gonna have to lean into, um, think differently about how we manage trash.
Yes, we're, we're a little behind all the times when it comes to other towns with our similar populations and our similar types of businesses and residences.
So in other towns that, that have, that aren't paying, which is most of the other towns are not paying commercial haulers or paying the dumping.
Mm-hmm.
So say, you know, right now, I can't remember if I spend thirty or forty dollars a month
Mm-hmm.
to have my trash picked up at the end of my driveway, so.
You're only paying to rent their dumpsters or to have them come pick it up. Anything that's in there for tonnage, the town is paying for.
And so like if I lived in another town?
Mm-hmm.
Do you know, any idea what they charge?
It's based on what their hauler wants to charge, um.
But it'd be interesting to see, because I'm kinda curious, you know, and I can call and say I live in this town, how much does it cost me to pick up at the end of my driveway?
And, and in that case, if we weren't paying for what the commercial haulers were picking up, residential and or commercial, it would be based on how the haulers determine their fees per their customers.
Sure.
So if a business has, you know, four, four yard containers, they can pretty well judge tonnage approximate and that's what they'd be billing their customers for. There's no way to separate it per person, per business, because it all goes in the same packer trucks on there.
Yeah, I'm just kinda curious, you know, because other communities are not paying for those dumping, you know.
Nope, it's all the stuff what their haulers.
You know, I, I still go to the transfer station, it was just sheer laziness and it's like thirty or forty dollars, which I can afford to pay and.
Yeah.
It's my, my house and my parents' house and.
Yeah.
We do like a big barrel a week, like a rolling barrel, so it's worth it, but.
Yeah, but in other cases, we sell a sticker for ten dollars and it's good for two years, which is one of the cheapest ones around as well.
I'd probably still pay if I had to pay seventy-five dollars, so.
Wes.
I know not everyone could do that, but yeah.
Other towns charge hundreds for, ask for a year.
I've got a question, how, uh, since you instituted the, the policy of people paying for anything going into like the, the contractors.
The demolition.
Demolition debris.
Mm-hmm.
Has undoubtedly that has re- been reduced, that's use has, but has the household trash been affected by that? Pretty much the same?
Pretty much the same.
Pretty much the same, okay.
And a lot of stuff that was going into the demolition debris bin can go in the household trash because they were using it as just, alright, I'm unloading wood, I'm gonna throw everything in that bin, you know? And the compactors are cheaper per ton, okay? There are certain things, no, we cannot put in those compactors, we have to pressure treat it. Can't put couches and chairs down there, um, but some of the throwing away garden hose, they were throwing it in the demolition debris, you know, stuff like that. So a lot of it has also come down to education. I mean, somebody comes with a, with a trailer load of material, it's like, well, if you put this down in the woodpile, if you separate the metal, if you separate this, it's not gonna charge you next to nothing. Um, so a lot of it has been education, but we are not getting slammed with the full trailer loads, dump trailer loads of demolition debris where we really can't track what's coming from.
So the real issue then is people getting their trash picked up.
Mm, and commercial businesses.
So.
We pay for.
Which they're getting it picked up too, commercial businesses, yeah.
And.
Yes, Brian?
And it all makes together.
I just want to make sure everyone knows, understands that the code enforcement officer and the police chief are the only two designated to enforce this ordinance.
That's another thing.
And I don't know the legality of even adding the solid waste supervisor to enforce it since they're not trained in land use violations. So that's something we'd have to work with our attorney if that's something we're gonna look at, but I, I just don't know how that, I don't know how that works. And the other thing is if it can't be the solid waste supervisor, it has to be the code officer. I mean, there's only so many hours in a day, so how much chasing are we gonna be able to do on this stuff?
Did she take the class on it, have you done that?
Literally have to become a code officer, I'm like.
What does the trash disposal have to do with land use stuff?
It, it's a land use violation.
Of what's coming in?
That's how it'd be treated, yes.
On what's coming into the transfer.
Well, no, you can manage anything, you can reject loads and things like that, but as far as like folks getting their trash picked up at home and they're throwing recyclables in there, only the code officer, the police chief, has the authority to.
Right, right, no, absolutely, I'm not stopping at people's houses when he's saying.
Anything, you can decide your facility, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm not stopping at people's houses and stuff, but.
So you have, you have the authority to go through people's trash?
I can if you bring it in.
No, I'm talking to Brian.
He can if he wants to, I've got it up on the landfill.
I wouldn't say that, it's a constitutional issue around that, that's why I'm saying.
That's why I don't go to people's homes, I go to the landfill, once it's picked up, it's not on their property. I go up to the very top of the landfill and open up bags. It's fine.
Okay, anybody have anything else in this, yes, sir?
Yeah, I was just really quickly wondering if there was a way to make it easier for commercial businesses to incentivize recycling and make it more difficult for them not to incentivize recycling?
I would love to hear thoughts on that because I've had certain businesses tell me, I don't wanna bother with it, I'm just running my dumpster.
I mean, is it just an open market all the way around or is it at the, at the waste disposal center? Is there something that could be done with that, I mean?
Hey girl, if it's all the same.
And why, why, it's so interesting to understand why we wouldn't, why we would pay for that. Um, there, if there's no way to control the response effort of places like Walmart and the hospital and other large commercial places where all of the cardboard's coming from.
Walmart does recycle.
Walmart in Hanford, they do build their own cardboard, they sell it themselves, um, because it is a commodity.
So, yeah, okay.
Certain, like New Balance actually builds their own cardboard and brings it to us to sell.
Well, I think I use those guys as an example because they're easy to pick on.
No, it's the same.
It's the same, um, i- it's like, uh, it's like jail facilities that decide to keep compost out of dumpsters because it reduces tipping fees. So if you can keep the stuff out, then you don't have to pay for as many turns on your dumpster. So to incentivize recycling, to keep that stuff out and, and either make money on it or turn it into the town so they can make money, it should reduce your commercial hauling fees. Except, we don't pass that charge on to businesses, so there's no incentive whatsoever to reduce your tipping fees.
So it's basically the town's paying for it and I'm gonna throw whatever I want in there.
Yep.
Believe what I've seen in there, um.
Or residential that has curbside too.
Yep.
Like if we chose at our house not to recycle, we'd just put it all in that barrel and it would go right in the truck.
Yeah.
But it, I see it at commercial places when I go by and you see a dumpster full of cardboard, it's usually the most noticed.
And the other hard part with paying for, like I said, if I wasn't on top of the landfill every day checking every load charged in Skamhegan, I've already caught one where there was a whole load of cardboard from Wampertler and last time I checked, that wasn't in Skamhegan, but it was charged to us, so. Yeah, but it's still not in Skamhegan. There's also, I have found items that are from many other towns in there, so.
Would there be some way to maybe add a, a tax to, uh, dump, dumpsters? A dumpster tax that's.
I'm not sure.
I, I mean, to, to cover, you know, if, if it's.
They come and go there.
And then reduce it for the recycling dumpsters, right? So like recycling ones would be super cheap and, I mean, I don't know, the.
I mean, typically, people don't have three dumpsters to, to divide all these things up.
Why are we still paying the commercial haulers? We're the only town in the whole region that does it. Why are we doing that? It's absolutely insane. It means we're paying for waste from other towns that these commercial haulers are picking up.
I mean, that's.
We are.
I'm sure we are some, but that's not particularly.
Why are we in that business? It just makes no sense to me whatsoever.
The people that brought waste from other towns and charged it to us, that's a crime.
It is.
Okay, you know, that's, that's a, you know, that's fraud. But that's the commercial hauler doing that, they're, they're reducing their cost of tipping, which they would incur at another town.
Mm-hmm.
And so, so, so that's commercial fraud.
And in the past, you know, Randy had banned a hauler from town for several years that allowed him to come back in, um, and stuff like that. So that is allowable through the ordinance, if they are not following the commercial hauler rules that the town has set forth, um, they can be removed as a licensed commercial hauler, so they would be able to charge to Skamhegan when they go to waste management. They would have to remove all their dumpsters or pay the tipping fees themselves, so.
So we're, we're just relying if they're being honest and they're.
So we're, we're just relying that they're being honest in picking up trash for only Scampegan as a.
Holy goodness.
I don't know, that's not true.
That is why I'm going on the landfill and opening up people's trash bags.
So why don't we just make them pay for the tonnage and then whoever's buying it that's paying for the dumpster is paying for all the services?
That would be what I'm talking about, yes.
That's what we need to revisit and right now.
Whereas we would only be paying the tonnage for what comes through the transfer station, which is a lot easier to monitor.
Exactly.
Brian?
So if that all happens, his job becomes much easier because the folks can have, folks are having, well, no, not in that situation, they still have to pay for it. Just trying to figure out a way where we can tie this all together because a lot of these enforcement issues are related to household trash and folks don't have the means to take care of. They don't have a vehicle or any other method to get their waste to the solid waste facility. They don't have the money to pay for a dumpster, so.
But we do offer the temporary permits. If they have a friend or someone that has a truck, we can issue a temporary permit for that address for a certain amount of time for them to help them clean up.
How do we get that in the public? Because I've lived in this town for almost twenty years and that's probably exciting, but I, I didn't see it, but common knowledge is people that live
in town and don't have it, but I've discussed flyers, we've discussed poor things in order to get it out. We've always had temporary permits available. Somebody doesn't have a vehicle or if they're getting somebody, you know, borrowing somebody's truck who might be from out of town, they come see me, show the registration, I can issue a temporary permit, it's ten dollars. And I can issue it for up to a year, like a lot of the snowbirds. They own property here, but they live out of state, they're registering for it because it's cheaper. I can issue a temporary permit to their vehicle for ten dollars for the whole year. Because they own property or I can do a certain amount of time if somebody's helping somebody clean up a mess.
Is it a regular permit, ten dollars?
The sticker is ten dollars for two years. Yep. Yep.
I'm trying to figure out, there's not, I suppose it's half, half price. Yes, ma'am?
So being a foreigner to Maine, when we lived in California, we lived in a community bigger than the population of Maine. And our community had a or one or two companies that went door to door and picked up your trash. You, I paid to have this truck come. They came once a week and they did it by neighborhoods, but the, the trash only came from our community and it went to the transfer station. So there was no opportunity to hide someone else's trash in Scampegan. And I know that probably is feasible because I think that would then become a town contract with whoever is going to pick it up by.
Yeah, we have six commercial haulers that are licensed in this town, but they're also licensed in many other towns.
Right, these, these people were just licensed.
Could we hire one to just pick up all our trash?
Yes, Amber.
I think in, in having this conversation with select board members of decades ago, this ha, this, it has been part of a feasibility study. If commercial haulers and, and the pass-through cost to businesses to pay for their trash and hopefully incentivize them to separate, if that were dramatically reduced, which I understand from you is sixty-five to seventy-five percent of our municipal waste budget, that is, that's commercial hauling. So if the smaller part of our budget is household waste, then maybe we free up funds to actually provide that kind of service. But I, I'd like to investigate that, I'd like us to.
No, just wanna make sure you guys understand, when I say commercial haulers, they're not just picking up commercial trash. They pick up commercial residential all in the same day. So they're not just, they don't, they don't just do commercials. I mean, we have Bolsters Waste Management, Casella, Somerset Disposal, Gregory's, and now the Dump Gone in Town. So those are all the commercial haulers, so they pick up your trash can at the end of the driveway and they go pick up a eight-year dumpster at a business.
We can cut them all out and just haul our own trash, knock them out.
LLC.
But anyway, I think it definitely needs more discussion with the new select board and stuff like that. I would like to set that up with you at some point. As far as the ordinance goes though, just a lot of updates to the rules and regulations as well need to be done.
Can you send us the, your notes?
I can scan this and send this right to all of you.
Yeah, and then we can work on updating it or if you even, because we also will have to work on.
Go to these guys.
And then we'll have to do the, the, we're trying to format all the ordinances to look the same.
Exactly, that needs to be done too.
I think we called it the Steve Givony clause or something, so.
Yep, no, I will send this all off to all of you. Everything that I had pinned onto was highlighted. And if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Good question.
Sure.
All this separation and like that, according to what we were hearing, it's all voluntary, right?
As far as.
Is it enforceable? Is any of this enforceable?
Within your hands, yes.
It is.
By the code enforcement officer or the police chief.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, I can respond to you, but it was at the transfer station or the landfill.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you don't, but I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Really, in practical terms.
There's a fine in here too.
In, in, in practical terms, how you really enforce it?
Unless you're looking through everybody's single trash bag, it's hard to do.
So, you know, it, it's ultimately voluntary. It, it works out that way.
It does, it does. And that's why we just push the education as much as possible. That's why we're trying to get easier avenues for people to recycle. We have those trailers now, they're replaced. You'll be able to recycle cardboard and pay for twenty-four seven, you'll be able, have access to it twenty-four seven. And, and just work, trying to educate these businesses. I mean, you wouldn't believe all the business cardboard I found in those files, so.
Oh yeah, I would.
Yeah.
I work on a construction site every day. I know what goes into the roll-off.
Oh yeah, everything under the sun.
All of it goes right in there.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, depends where you have it.
Just so you know, we don't pay for any open top containers the town doesn't.
Yeah.
So. But just something to further discussion, but there were some updates in the ordinance that we need to be done.
Very good. Last one, abandoned and uninhabited buildings.
Oh no, I was just, I'm glad you brought up the low recycled trailers, because KB Pog just submitted the application.
Yeah, I know, I worked with them, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. I was just trying to figure out how that fitted.
Yeah, I've been working with Olivia, we got it in just in time. Those trailers are to be placed in other towns to bring more recyclables in to us, to help other towns who have gotten rid of their recycling program, but it's also gonna boost revenues for Scampegan when we sell those recyclables. And there's no match for that grant, so there's no cost to.
And also speaking about that grant, the next round for the Community Resilience Partnership is coming up in January. And I have some handouts, if people wanna start thinking about any projects, they would like to know that we can help you with a grant process, so.
I think KB Pog did a great job, they wrote everything and did everything, I just had to get pricing, so.
Yeah, all in both ways. These are just some outlines for like a checklist of the types of things that this grant covers. And there's up to seventy-five thousand dollars available if Scampegan wants to produce something on its own. And a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for joint applications with other towns, like recycling trailers. Yeah.
Okay, who, who wants to talk about abandoned and uninhabited buildings?
I'm happy to lift that one up. You know, it's something we've talked about in the past. I think right now we're requiring people that are, correct me if I'm wrong, it's uninhabited buildings, there's a registry?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a voluntary program essentially, seventy-five dollars a year. Our property maintenance ordinance requires making buildings to be registered to the town, so we keep patterns on them.
How many are registered?
Maybe one. But.
How many vacant buildings do we have?
There's really, there's really nothing we can do on the enforcement side of that. The courts have set precedence on that and saying basically you have to stake out properties twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. A code enforcement officer's observations during their work hours before, uh, eight AM to four thirty PM is not enough to get enough evidence to say that a property is vacant or occupied for that matter, so. It's really, it's really a voluntary program, if you will.
And so I, I did see the city of Bangor is a little more aggressive and it seems like they must be using public safety.
Yeah, I don't know how they're doing that, to be honest with you. I'm not seeing a way to do it.
Yeah, because they actually like levied some fines on some of their properties, but I know some of the conversations I've had with Whitney before, it's like, you know, some of these properties that are, you know, these chronic issues are also properties that appear in some cases to be abandoned, uninhabited. Even if you find the owner, they might not live in state. And then there's a number of buildings that people are just sitting on because it's cheaper to not do anything with them. They're also, I'm always surprised the properties that people are paying taxes on and just not maintaining them. So there is an investment there, but I just put that on there because I knew we were gonna have a conversation about the property maintenance. Ryan and I have chatted before about that issue of having to stake them out, but, you know, we could, we could go a route to try to develop it, but in the end, it's, it's down to that enforcement piece, which we talked about before and the enforcement for a lot of this.
I don't know if we can put any prescriptive language in there that gives conditions of vacancy and if, whether or not that would even be legal. I just see, I just see constitutional issues all over that. I, I would, if it's a constitution, I would have an attorney, but that's a, that's a line I'm all over the cross.
So I'll, I'm happy to keep bringing it up from time to time, I'll do a little research. I know Aaron's truck seems pretty comfortable, so you know, if he has to stay in it a night or two.
Yeah, it's just in purpose, I.
It's very comfortable for a tall guy.
A little chocolate.
I mean, couldn't, couldn't we do a research of other towns and see what they've done? Just maybe try to mirror what they're doing.
And you see it in some, you know, I noticed it in, you know, Bangor's a city that I go to frequently and you'll see, you know, buildings marked by the fire department when something's, you know, vacant and boarded up, just, you know, for safety reasons, so.
Yeah, I mean, if there are, if there are issues with a property within, that are covered by the property maintenance ordinance, that would not preclude us from taking any enforcement action. I think there's enough, there's enough within the ordinance for us to do that. It's just requiring them to register a building because it's vacant or not is not something we can do. It's just, you can't prove it, so.
So if I wanted to buy five buildings and then just leave them empty, and I pay taxes on them every year, what problem is there with that?
As long as your property is kept up and meets all the requirements of.
So that doesn't sound like, that doesn't sound like, that sounds like a different type of ordinance than this.
My drive-through last night, or yesterday evening, I mean, there's several properties, it's clearly they're not being lived in. The windows are gone, the doors are gone, but the properties are there, the houses are there.
Are they paying taxes on them?
I'm not sure, but I can tell you that it, it doesn't make sense if we have a drug problem and people are in there and out of there. At that point, it becomes a danger to the neighbors.
Isn't this the same problem that we already discussed?
They're all sort of tied in, they're all tied in together, but the fact is, is these are abandoned buildings that, you know, are actually more, creating more problems than just being abandoned.
It's really the property maintenance issue that we've already discussed.
Yeah, we've got. And I can, I can attest to the issue with vacant buildings and, and people trespassing. Eight Mount Pleasant Avenue, which we finally tore down over a year ago, was a prime example of that. I would spend three or four days a week going over there, kicking people out of that building, sometimes twice a day, and then reboarding it up, spending taxpayer money to do that, so. I can, I can see where you're coming from with that. And I think, I think just using the ordinance as it stands, if it doesn't meet the standards, then, you know, we can begin to complain on that property, then we have to take action. Most of what the office does is complaint-based, we're not out there just pounding the pavement, looking for problems. There, there are other, many other aspects to the job than just driving around the office. We rely heavily on complaints.
So what can we, what would you expect from us concerning that? Is there new language? You, you basically said legally, there's nothing to be done.
If a property's vacant and it's not an issue as far as property maintenance ordinance goes, as it stands, there's nothing we can do about it.
Well, I don't know why you would need to do anything about it.
I, I would agree. I mean, if somebody's taking care of the whole yard and they're probably working on it, so I just, I think that we're talking about something that might not even exist. Usually when you have these abandoned buildings, everything around it is bad too, so.
The biggest issue I've had with vacant buildings are the ones that are foreclosed and the mortgage company owns them. And then when you call to tell them that, you know, the property's in violation, sometimes it hang up on you and other times they just tell you to pound sand and we're not doing anything about it. And they're extremely difficult to get a hold of. You don't even know who you're supposed to talk to half the time, so it's, and when you do your deed research, there's very limited information on that whole process. It's really the foreclosure process that's creating a lot of these issues. But again, it goes back to due process. Someone's foreclosed on their home, they should give, get an opportunity to make that right. That's, yeah. So those are, those are some of the other issues with the office.
Next item, Courier Brook mapping. Is that something that you, you brought up, or is that something that was brought up by somebody?
I think Melanie brought that up, the last time.
Go ahead.
This is something I've been working on for the last three years, trying to find a solution to that problem over on Main Street. It's really the entire Courier Brook watershed. So I'm glad that you mentioned that, there's another round coming up in January, because I would like to go after that funding to get some engineering done. Get, you did get some estimates from engineers to see what it would cost to find those solutions. And part of that would be to get that area mapped properly so that we know what the flows really are. We've got US, we've got USGS data on that watershed, but it's not enough to help us narrow down the, the bottlenecks on that watershed. I've got my own ideas of what needs to happen, where I see the bottlenecks. Clearly that parking lot is one of them. But that's, that's one of the, one of the projects I'd like to use our funding source for. Knowing though, sorry, knowing though that any fix to that is, you're talking multi-millions. This isn't, this isn't a small project, so.
So from the planning board, you'd just be looking for a letter of support for that?
Likely yes.
Yeah, and then you just need the select board's approval to go after that grant?
Uh, it's not, it's no grant, there's no match.
Okay.
I would just communicate that we're going after the grant, just to give a heads up. Town manager signs off on it and it really should go through the community residency art committee to make a recommendation to the select board before we go after it. So that's the route we'll be taking.
Do you have a new member on that committee?
No, uh, someone from the select board, I forget who.
Any, any select board member on that committee?
It was, it was Steve Givony, so I can't remember who he did on board committees, but.
Okay.
We'll go back and look at it.
Department heads. Jason. Leaf, the leaf pickup.
Kinda wasn't helpful this, uh, it's what it cost me to, an estimate what this would cost.
I thought you were handing out the schedule, I was getting ready, Jason.
Yeah. So, we're picking up leaves for eight weeks in the spring. Getting a little out of hand. We're picking up brush, we're picking up leaves, we're cleaning up everybody's yard. For, we're only doing it in town. The other town people are still paying for us to do this. I don't think it's fair. And, you know, some of these numbers, you know, we're paying for our truck, we've gotta do maintenance on it. We're going behind on other, other things that we should be doing, like sucking manholes out. We're going behind on other things that we should be doing, like sucking manholes out. We're way behind on that. That goes into our solid waste. Sand goes into our sewer department. Costs him money getting rid of that sand. I think we should really think about at least maybe picking up once a year for a month. That's it.
If you leave the leaves there, they're going to flood up your sewer system and be a drainage. That's.
Well, then we need to have someone, really, we're not supposed to be picking it up everywhere. Supposed to be picking it up with people with curbs and drains.
Right.
Now we're picking it up everywhere in this, in town. You have a drain in front of your house and a curb, those are the places we're supposed to be picking it up. And that's it. But how do you make this happen? How do you, make them not do it?
Jason, I see you got the sweeper truck there. Isn't that for picking up all the sand and salt on the roads?
Yes.
I mean, that's got to still happen.
Yeah, we do that, we do that with that truck.
Or twice a year. It's horrible.
Then we switch it to the rear end of it and pick up leaves with it. And that same truck picks up, cleans our drains with it, which we're way behind on because we're picking up leaves for six, eight weeks out of the year. And then we're on to doing ditching and other stuff like that. We're falling behind.
I'm just saying, you're not, you're not talking about getting rid of picking up all the sand and salt on the roads, because.
Talking about picking up leaves.
Okay, because I see it.
That truck picks up, that dock truck picks up.
Just the leaves, okay.
Why can't you just restrict the time period that you do it, just like you mentioned?
That's what I'd like to do. I like to do it once a year for a month. Once a year for a month, that's it.
Brian?
I think a lot of what Jason wants to do, he can do within the policy. We have a leaf pickup policy and it specifically states it's only to be picked up in these areas. I think somewhere along the timeline, over the years, Greg Dorr just did it for everybody. And I mean, if you follow his policy, he's gonna, he only has to do what he's proposing to do. The other issue he's dealing with is folks, I talk to my own family members who live here, they do it all the time. I tell them not to, but they take in their leaves from the backyard and bring it everything out front. Well, it's not, that's not what that service is for. It's for the trees and the drainage plant, only not your entire yard.
I've had people pick it up from their backyard, in their own pickup, and put it on the curb. You get it to the, you get it that far, keep taking it to the transfer station. Don't take all you can handle.
Jason, I think use a tarp, so.
It doesn't work.
What?
I don't use my pickup, I use a tarp to bring it.
When you take it to the backyard, you're a violator too. But you know what? You could pull it out back and put it in the woods and.
I could at my house, you know, yeah.
Like, what prevents you from restricting your schedule?
What, what do you, how do I get them not to put it out there though? That's my problem. Because they've been so many years of putting it out there.
Public now, so.
It's going to end up becoming a code enforcement issue by the sound of it, so you've got to be careful.
We have leaves picked up. I mean, we've got tree limbs out there right now that people have cut in their backyard and put them outside the road.
They're already dead.
They're already dead. You know, it states in that policy that's only storm damage. Cutting all your back forty out and bringing it outside, putting it on the curb is not my job.
I don't bring anything from the other side of the stream.
Yeah, I want to.
Sounds like.
Like the large trash removal that Fairfield does. Bangor does the same thing with branches. Once a year, they do your street once. If you missed it when they come through, forget it.
That's the way I want it. I want to pick it up. I'm going down your street once. If I, you didn't have it out there, sorry, haul it yourself.
Tell them the dates that you're going to do certain streets and that's all they need to know.
What's the once a year? Is it a fall cleanup or is it a spring cleanup?
I would like to do, I'd like to do the fall, not the spring.
Brian?
We do have a new mass notification system where we can send this out. So he's ready to roll this out, or the select board's ready to come onboard with this and roll it out. We can send those notifications out day by day by day to say, you know, those who don't, those who don't have a landline will have to sign up for those notifications once we've aligned with it. But everyone who's got a landline is going to get a toll if we put it out there.
So basically your system's set up to where it can just call the people in the area where he's going to be doing it?
I believe so. If not, it's going to be everybody in the system. I'm not sure about being able to. I think it's tied to GIS and geolocation, but I'm not calling it all.
Can't use your artificial intelligence secretary and just say.
Sure.
So.
Get them a megaphone when you drive around a lot.
Yes.
I don't live in town, but I live, you know, just live outside on Bigelow Hill. My leaves decompose. Does that not happen in town?
I don't think it does.
Well, I mean, you know, with like mowing and you can chop them up. I just don't understand the need to.
That's where mine goes.
Put biodegradable material into, are they in trash bags that are being picked up?
No, they just rake them out to the side of the road and.
They come along with the vacuum.
Okay.
Sometimes if your piles make it up.
I'm not saying that in-town people are spoiled, but they are.
Yeah. Now, now I know what I can do.
Some back forty to dump them on either. Like, I have a hundred by a hundred, so there's no place to put my pile of leaves other than out by the road for Jason. Other than if, if, like, some of my neighbors don't have trucks.
I'll pick it up once a year. But get it all out.
You better have it on time though.
Oh, my husband's always on.
You know, picking up leaves is good for a lot of votes, I'll bet.
I think senior citizens depend on it. I know a lot of.
People love it.
A lot of people don't have trucks.
Brian?
The ones that.
Hold on a second. I see it's depend on it, but there's a lot that abuse it too. I know, I see that.
Brian?
I think the school district has their volunteer day for their seniors and stuff. Maybe you try to work with those guys to also let those folks do get help. You know, the kids get their volunteer hours and go take care of some citizens' properties.
My guys go over and above, you know, there's older lady, they help rake, rake it out for them, you know, if it's close, they'll help them.
There's piles of sticks on my street that have been there for two years.
It's repeated. I come through your neighborhood and you didn't have it out and then you saw the truck go by and you start raking and you're like, you forgot me. That's where, that's where it's got to end. Because we go back and forth for eight weeks. That's too much.
I got a pile in my neighborhood. I think code got to them and that lady cleaned her yard. Like, I have never seen it. I've been there for years. And it's great, big long.
I have a humongous oak tree.
Leaves and pine needles and branches and, yeah, I think you guys got it.
She piled it all on the road, so.
Jason, you're just looking for planning board, select board support to make the call. Yeah, I mean.
I do. I just don't, I don't want to get hung on this too because I know people do appreciate it.
Oh, you will. Don't worry about that.
You will, but it'll have to come with an education.
I want you guys to get hung to.
This is great.
So we'll take it. We'll let the select board take a vote to say you need to. We're not voted in, so.
There's some very cool compost structures. I have it pulled up on my phone. That start with twigs and branches that you pile your leaves onto and into and then you can grow cool stuff out of it. It's like a.
Yeah, there's some of those around town that are still beside the road. Got pumpkins growing out of it.
Yeah, yeah. It's like a German method of composting. We just need an education campaign to make fun.
You're just out of hose reach.
I don't know. Do you think we're wasting money at this?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought that, yeah, I thought that. I'm always shocked that you take as much as you do, but I wouldn't put it out if you didn't take it.
I know.
If you were an inch, you'll take a mile, so.
I'm always shocked how much they're bringing up to us. I've got a big pile there. It's looking at working.
So therefore, we bring it all up to her and then we have to pay to get rid of it.
Right, but if you're picking it up with a truck that's.
How do you figure it out? Because you're out there mixing it.
Well, it's being composted and we need a better way. Or we sell, we actually sold it last year, but we're not paying the tipping fees to get rid of that eighty dollars a ton.
We've given it away.
We can, we can teach people to make big compost piles with their leaves. We'll grow pumpkins and then we'll do like damascato. We'll carve the pumpkins and we'll float them down the river and we'll have a big festival and.
Okay, Jason, it sounds like the buck stops with you on this one, so you.
I'd like to go.
You need to make the call for your.
We got you, Jason.
Your department.
Go for it. Four weeks. Four weeks in the fall, that's it. No more in the spring.
So one question though, in the past when we've had like a storm, you know, there is an effort to go clean, you know, sticks and stuff.
Right, we'll pick up storm damage.
Yep.
We'll still go around do our storm damage stuff, but can't cat the back forty and put it in the front yard anymore. We're chipping it. It's just, my crew's running short. We have other things we need to do to get, take care of this town. Infrastructure's first and this leaf thing is getting out of hand.
And the one thing that's missing here too is when you use the front-end loader when that leaf truck is broken.
Correct.
Which is not a good use of that, you know, because then you're causing damage.
That and, we got half a million dollars worth of equipment out there that we're using to haul leaves off.
Good point. We got your back.
We'll see.
They're behind you, way behind you.
Okay. Staff, do we have anything? Nothing. Very good, yes, Brian?
I would like to propose that this meeting happen like July, after July one each year moving forward so that we can take care of ordinances in a timely fashion, better planning moving forward. Just a thought.
Sounds good to me. It'll depend on the select board. But we can definitely arrange it on our part. Okay, I appreciate everybody being here tonight. I think some progress has been made. Some real issues have been discussed. Still a lot of work to do on each of these things, but I will entertain a motion to adjourn. You have a second?